Two thousand sixteen, excuse me, regular monthly meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Cape Elizabeth. The, we have a small, but I'm sure will be quite busy agenda this evening. First item will be approval of minutes of the, pardon me. Previous meeting. Second item of business is the Verizon Wireless Water Tank Antenna Site Plan. Verizon Wireless is requesting site plan review to install antennas, water tank, and a ten-foot by sixteen-foot concrete pad supporting equipment, cabinets, and a generator located eleven Avon Road. This will be the site plan public hearing. The next item of business will be Cape Chiropractic and Acupuncture, a three-lot minor subdivision, two mixed-use building site plan review. Two Penguin Properties LLC are requesting minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing six thousand two hundred five square feet of medical office space, ten multi-unit residential units, and a three hundred and fifty-seven square foot building connector located at twelve Hillway. The hearing tonight is on minor subdivision completeness and site plan completeness. And finally, there will be an opportunity at the end for public comment on any item which is not on the agenda. The first item is the minutes from our last meeting, which has been circulated. I have one comment. I think the last paragraph from the first page, the sentence reading, "The backup generator will be in a sound proof enclosure," should read, "The backup generator will be in a sound dampening enclosure." I believe that's consistent with the representation. Any other comments by board members? With that amendment, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Joe. Second? Jonathan, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Six, six. Oh. I'm sorry.
I was abstaining.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that's, you're saying, right. Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is the Verizon Wireless Water Tank Antenna Site Plan Proposal. Verizon Wireless is requesting site plan review to install wireless antennas on the existing water tower located at eleven Avon Road and to construct a ten-by-sixteen concrete pad at the base of the tower to support equipment cabinets and a generator. Application will be reviewed for compliance with Section nineteen-nine site plan regulations. So we'll proceed in the following manner. Maureen has a couple of minor corrections to her background memo on the subject. The applicant or representatives will then summarize changes to last month's project submission. There will then be an opportunity for the public to comment on this application. Consistent with our past practice, each person will be allowed to speak for three minutes. I'd like to say also that we've received a number of written comments, which we always encourage because it permits the public to make longer, more detailed, more complicated, or more data-driven arguments, and there's been some very good stuff submitted, for which we thank you. To close the public hearing, the board will then discuss the application, and at the end of the discussion, the board has the option to approve, approve with conditions, table, or deny the application. Maureen, would you like to get your administrative details out of the way?
Sure, thank you. So memo you received tonight tended to be a little longer than usual and apparently more full of mistakes than usual. So in the middle of the first page, under site plan review standards, there is a reference to the town engineer's comments. There are no town engineer's comments for this month. There's only town engineer's comments from last month. So those are not attached. On page three, near the bottom of the page, under the heading Section nineteen-eight-twelve Tower and Antenna Performance Standards, I reference Section nineteen-three-three. It's actually Section nineteen-three-two. So that should be dash two. And then one more on page six, under item eleven, the word "general" should really be "generate." Thank you.
Everybody has that? No questions from Maureen? Okay, we'll move next to the submission by the applicant's representative. Mr. Anderson, you want to tell us what's happened since last time we met?
Sure, will do. So I figure what I can do is talk a little bit about kind of how we got here and then respond to, talk a little bit about the additional submission we submitted, and then I've also had the chance to review some of the comments that have come in from the public and thought I would address a couple of those as well initially. So I have up on the screen, this is for purposes of the Planning Board members who may have their plans out, this is sheet Z-two. And so I figure I'll just walk through the general pieces of the components of the project for the members of the public and then talk a little bit about what's new. So this is the existing Portland Water District site, and within the center of the site, there is a fenced area that includes two structures. There's an eighty-foot existing water tank, and there is a small shed. And so what Verizon Wireless is proposing to do in altering the site, we won't be altering the tank itself, and we propose to retain the existing fenced area that goes around. What we're doing is we're really installing two primary new components, two primary components of this wireless facility. The first are the antennas that you see in these three arrays that are located at the top of the tank. Those are placed there in that particular location, given the coverage objectives of the site. Obviously, the goal here is for signal to propagate in those three directions in order to kind of fill in service gaps that currently exist in this area of Cape Elizabeth. So the antennas are the first primary component of the project. The next, there's a ten-by-sixteen-foot concrete pad that's being poured immediately adjacent to the tent, to the tank, and that's going to have two things. There's two cabinets. One is the electric equipment that generates the signal. Immediately adjacent to it is a battery cabinet that provides power, some amount of backup power to the site. And then immediately next to these two cabinets is a backup generator that's diesel-fired that's also located on the concrete pad. The generator will run in two different sets of circumstances. One, it is tested once a week for about twenty minutes to make sure that it's functioning properly. That is done remotely, and it usually is set for something like ten-thirty in the morning on a Tuesday, and we do it the same time every week. The other time the generator will be running is in the event of a power failure and after the batteries have died. And the batteries are usually good for six to eight hours. So sometimes after six to eight hours of loss of power, that's when the generator will kick in. So as far as equipment, the antennas at the top of the tower and the equipment on the pad immediately adjacent are the two primary components. Power will run underground from a telephone pole across the street on Avon Road. And as of the original application that we had filed, Verizon Wireless proposes to use what is kind of an existing driveway slash parking area that is gravel for access to the site and didn't need to do any alterations to that for purposes of getting access and constructing the site. As you can see, there is significant vegetation around three sides of the tank, and so what we have proposed is a line of evergreen trees to be planted along the existing fence to provide some additional buffering where you don't have existing vegetation. This next slide is C-two. It shows a slightly larger view of the two equipment cabinets and the generator. And we're going to get rid of that.
Mr. Anderson, quick question. The output of that generator, is that, is my memory correct, ten kilowatt?
It's a ten-kilowatt generator, that's correct. And it will be tested at its full load, when it does the weekly test. It's not anticipated to run at a full load when, if, it actually has to come in for emergency situations.
But ten kilowatts, by the number of generators that you find around town, residential uses go between, anywhere between around seven up to ten, fifteen, and twenty, I believe. So just in terms of scale and output, this is?
Yeah.
In the household range of size, is that a fair statement?
Exactly. And the power demands of the site are not that much more significant. What is different about this commercial installation is there is a muffler system on it, and it's encased in a case that's intended to provide some additional sound proofing, so it can run at a slightly lower sound than something you'd get from Home Depot that would be on wheels that, you know, is kind of open and doesn't have a sound attenuation enclosure. The next helpful plan is C-three, which is the side view of the project. And again, you can see the two primary components. There is one of the three sets of antenna arrays on the top. It will be mounted to a railing at the top of the tank and will be enclosed in a shroud that will hide the presence of the four individual antennas within each array. The fiber cable will run down the side of the tank. We talked about this at the site visit. That cable tray will be painted to match the same color as the tank, and the shrouds are the same color as the tank. The cable will come down and go across what we keep referring to as an ice bridge and a roof over the equipment. This is just an insulation above the equipment that makes sure if ice fall off the sides of the tank or come off any of the tree branches that are immediately adjacent, that they don't fall down and hit directly the equipment. The idea is to protect the cable because if it's damaged, it needs to be rerun in a single piece all the way to the antennas. The equipment will be surrounded, right now it's surrounded, it has on this side the steel fence that's currently there. We will add three sections of wooden stockade fencing around the other three corners of the insulation to provide some kind of further buffering of the site, visual buffer for the new equipment. And on this, you can see, this is the existing fence that comes across, that's steel, and we're proposing to add three segments of wooden fence around. This will be a locked gate. The existing gate here is locked, and those are the principal components of the site. As we had discussed at the last meeting, this design is slightly different than what we had originally proposed. The original proposal included a larger equipment shelter that was located in this area, within which you had both the backup generator and the signaling equipment. Verizon Wireless, both because it's starting to convert some of these over to the smaller equipment cabinets, and because one of the planning board members had asked about the possibility of moving the equipment from here to behind the tank, given that most of the residences are over here. So we were able to eliminate the equipment shelter and replace it with the cabinets and the backup generator. Two principal benefits there, the scale of that installation is much smaller than the twelve-by-twenty-six, you know, single-story-high shed that we had proposed that was going to be the equipment shelter. And also, the original equipment shelter required larger HVAC units on it to provide heating and cooling. Those are rated at a higher sound level. They did comply with the town standards, but the single fan that's located on one of the, of the equipment cabinets runs at a much quieter level, so there's some additional benefit that the sound related to the operation of the cooling system with the equipment will be lower than, than if we had kept the equipment shelter. The other change that we've made recently is there were, we did intend to put some motion detector lighting in the corners of the poles for the tech. We've now proposed to eliminate that lighting, and the, the tech who usually visits, visits the site approximately once a month, if he comes at night, will be able to use a flashlight or other means of illumination. So we've eliminated the lighting. So as of right now, there won't be any lighting associated with any aspect of the project. And, so after we met with the planning board and we went out initially and then kind of met with you a second time, we had a discussion about a number of items that we collected some additional information for, and I think it was on March second, had submitted some supplemental information, yeah, March second, in response to some of the questions. I just want to run through those questions briefly because it reflects some changes on the plan. The first was, as we just discussed, it was a question about the lighting and the illumination. We addressed that by eliminating the lighting completely, so it's, it's no longer an issue. There was also a question about co-location on the site. The tank and the land is owned, as everyone knows, by the Portland Water District, but a question was raised to make sure that we confirm that Verizon Wireless would do nothing to interfere with another carrier attempting to co-locate on the tower, provided they could work out the details with the Portland Water District. At one point in time, AT&T was interested in doing that, but they have kind of backed off and as of yet not filed an application for that. So what we did is we added a note on C-one of the plan. This is hard to see there, so I'll just kind of note it. It's note six on C-one of the plan that states that Verizon Wireless, in accordance with its FCC license, will not take any action to interfere with any subsequent company's interest in co-locating on the site. This is an easy statement to make because the carriers work very closely together on co-locating when they own their own towers and they make them available for other carriers. It is a requirement of our FCC license to do so, so we've just added an additional notation to C-one on the plan, just making it crystal clear that if someone else wants to come on to the, to the tank, install their antennas as a way of avoiding another tower, we will not get in the way of that, and that is in fact what we're required to do under our FCC license. The second issue that had come up in our original meeting had to do with some ongoing lead soil remediation that the Water District has been doing at the site. One of the others had submitted a report in the last round showing that the Portland Water District had completed its initial round of remediation and that the testing that had been done showed no evidence of ongoing lead. We were not part of that, but we did go back and talk to the Portland Water District about where they are in the process. So Chris Crowe is the operations individual that we work with and have worked with on the site since the beginning, and he confirmed that the initial remediation is done. The arrangement the Water District has with the main DEP is that after the tank is painted, the Water District will go out and do some additional testing, subject to the DEP's review to make sure that there is no additional contamination of the soil that occurs as part of the repainting of the tower. In our March second submission, I provided a little more detail from our lease agreement with the Water District as to how this repainting is going to work. And what we noted in the submission is, and what the lease requires, is once we have the permits that we need, we notify the Portland Water District that it's time to paint the tank. The Water District, with its own contractors or employees, will do the repainting of the tank, and then after that, essentially, they send the bill to Verizon Wireless, and we're paying, I think it's up to fifty thousand dollars of the cost of repainting the tank. So Verizon Wireless won't be involved with the repainting. We will pay up to fifty thousand dollars of the cost. And then after the Water District has confirmed, per its arrangement with the DEP, that there's no ongoing need to do any other remediation at the site, then and only then will Verizon Wireless come on to the property and start to install the equipment. So not only will the remediation be done, the painting will be done, and final DEP sign-off will be in hand before Verizon Wireless goes on the site to install any of its equipment. And I appreciate that there was some confusion on that issue last time, so I just wanted to make sure.
Is that reflected, did you add a note in the documents reflecting that?
Yes, so we have a note on C-one, note number seven, that states that during installation, that we will comply with any requirement that the DEP imposes on the Water District as part of their kind of final closure of this project, which is something that we certainly would have had to have done, but we put a note on the plan to that effect as well. Another issue that had come up during both the last planning board meeting and the site walk was a question of whether or not the equipment could be installed inside the tank. We followed up with our engineers and the Water District. It is technologically feasible to cut an opening and to put the equipment inside the tank. The problem with an installation like that is that the major benefit of eliminating that equipment shelter was that you can avoid the need for the larger HVAC units to provide heating and cooling and moisture control inside the structure. Placing the equipment inside the tank will likely require the reinstallation of the larger HVAC units because the tank then in effect becomes the equipment shelter. And the instant, and the kind of the reinstallation of that equipment is, is going to lead to greater sound impacts. There probably sound impacts like with the shelter that could be met, but they're likely to be louder than the existing fan that is replacing those larger units as part of the installation of just the cabinets on, on the slab. So the likely impact of moving things inside arguably to keep them quieter is that a sound impact from the site will likely go up as opposed to the installation that we've Another thing that came up at the site walk was interest in whether or not we had any signs that were going to be installed as part of this project. On sheet C-four, there is a small, you can see, this just gives you a kind of a detail of the sign. It's a small sign. It just says FCC Tower Registration Number, and there will be a code that lines up with our registration number for this particular site that will be hung on the chain fence that is there, probably immediately adjacent to one side or the other of the swinging doors. And other than that FCC identification sign, there will be no signs associated with the Another issue that came up was a question of whether or not there would be any clearing, in particular whether or not we would have to remove any trees to install the underground electrical service to the site. We confirmed with Verizon Wireless, I believe at the site visit, but then afterwards, that, that we don't have to take down any trees to install the underground electric service. We've also put a note on Plan C-one, it's note eight, that at this point, we don't intend to remove any trees in order to install the project. The only caveat that I have on that in the submission is if during installation, I think you remember from the site walk, near that closest fence, some of those trees are quite close, and there's some overhanging, overhanging branches. Some of those branches may be cut just so we don't have ice buildup above the facility. And it may be that during installation, that Verizon Wireless determines that some of those trees that are closer to where the installation need to be moved either as part of the, you know, for safety, or, you know, we don't want them too close to the fence so people could climb them and get access to the interior. So it is possible that some trees would be removed, but right now, the plan is not to remove any trees in order to install the project. So I think those were the, oh, wait, there were a couple, oh, no, that was all of it. So there were a couple of other items that have come up in some of the comments that I just wanted to address briefly, and, but I understand there'll probably be further discussion with the board. One, there's been a question about the whip antennas that are on top of the tower, and are they in the right place, and are they the right height? We went back and did see that in the photo simulation, which actually shows you where these antennas are, they appear to be on the, kind of the right-hand side of the tank when you're standing in the parking area, and our side-view plan showed it slightly on the left. So we asked the engineer to kind of move them back over to the right where they actually are located. And we do have an elevation above ground level that they shot with their GPS, but as part of this project, that was really not a key component of designing the site. We just put those on there because they were part of the existing facility, and I've had the engineer add a note noting that the location and the height of those are really approximate only. We won't be altering those or moving them or doing anything that affects the height or the size or anything of those antennas, and we've tried to make some changes to the plans to kind of address this issue of where they are and that it's just an approximate location. Also, a question has come up about the height of the fence, and there is a requirement that for towers, that fences be eight feet and surround the tower. To the extent the planning board concludes that this water tank is a tower and is subject to the eight-foot standard, we were going to go do a measurement today, and I should mention Chip Fredette is not here today because his pickup truck broke down on Route 101 in New Hampshire, so I got a frantic text at five o'clock saying that he couldn't make it. He was going to go measure the fence and try to kind of get a sense of this height issue, but I think we can simplify it by saying that, to the extent you decide that there needs to be an eight-foot fence that goes around the entire water tank, we're fine with having that be a condition of any approval, and we will either modify the existing fence if it's not eight feet or replace the fence, do whatever is necessary to make sure that it is an eight-foot-high fence. My sense is that maybe some sections have settled or the wiring at the top has drooped or something, which is why it may be a little below eight feet, but we will modify and adjust it so that it's eight feet all the way around. I think unless you have any further questions, from me, I know there are a number of comments that have come in from the public. I will probably get up and respond to those after everybody's had a chance to really speak their mind, but if you have any questions, certainly.
When we were on site, I asked a question about a three-sixty shroud instead of the three individual shrouds. Is there any reason why you, did you consider it, or was there some technical reason or some other reason why you didn't include it?
We did consider it. I think our, our election to go with the individual was to just reduce the mass at the top of the tank. And we were trying to conceal the antennas, which of course was done initially on the question of whether this was a building permit-only site, they needed to be concealed if, if the project was going to go that route. But we concluded that running it all the way around would just put more material and a larger kind of bulkiness at the top of the tank that wouldn't serve any additional purpose. That was our thinking.
Well, I guess the angle that you look at, there's angles that you can see that if you go slightly to the right or the left of a shield, you're going to see behind the shield. So, but if the shield runs all the way around, you wouldn't be able to do that. I would just for concealment, that, that was, it didn't strike me as being very effective if it's only three shields. Only from the direct view would you shield the aerial from view, but not from the side.
Well, I should clarify that the shrouds will run across the front and they will run down the sides so that the views from, and they, they're kind of curved so that they will kind of follow the curve of the tank.
I can see that in the plan, but you still can't get away from the fact that you've got thirty or forty degrees of angle that you could see behind.
And you're absolutely correct. I guess we had, we hadn't done it for any reason other than our kind of subjective determination that less material at the top of the tank would be better, and that was just a balance we had struck, but we appreciate that the planning board might have different views about what would best kind of blend the antennas into the tank, and we're willing to kind of, you know, hear your thoughts on that. I should probably, I was asked to comment on one, what I think is a legal issue about this concealment issue, and I'll just give you my thoughts now, and we can talk about it more if you want. The, the way the ordinance is structured, if we are able to install these in a way that they're concealed, then that project doesn't come to the planning board. It's something that Ben can issue a permit for on the basis that, you know, you can't see them, they're, they're completely concealed, and therefore, it's not necessary to go through site plan review. And as I think, as you know, Ben made a determination that the antennas were not completely concealed, and as a result, he has sent the, the project to the planning board for your review. The, the way this works out and the way we dealt with this with the court was, the court didn't know whether or not, I mean, the judge had kind of seen Ben's initial determination but understood that after it came out of the court that Ben would have to take another crack at it, which he did after we got out and said, yes, it's not concealed, so you need to go to the planning board. At that point in time, what you're looking at are both the site plan review standards and the tower performance standards that are in the ordinance. There is a requirement that's entitled color that requires us to kind of blend the installation into the existing environment to the greatest extent possible, but there's no concealment requirement in the wireless standards that the planning board applies in a situation like this. And, and the reason why they're not there is because if this was concealed, then it would have never come to the planning board, and Ben could have issued the permit for it. He concluded it was not concealed, which we respect his judgment that the shrouds didn't cut it. And as a result, we come to the planning board, but at that point, obviously, it's not, it's not legally required that we then conceal them, because if we could conceal them, then we would leave you and we'd go back to Ben. So the concealment question is kind of a threshold question that the code officer has to answer. If the concealment is good, he issues the permit, and if the concealment is not good, then it comes to you and.
Well, I have to say, my, my question was basically built around aesthetics. I mean, that, you know, having a break in the shield sort of takes your eye to it.
Yes.
Whereas if it was all the way around, you wouldn't, and, and it would be, look like it was part of the tower rather than an appendage to it, so.
And, and the, the shrouds could be extended, as an engineering feat, it could be extended to go around the railing. They're not significantly heavy. The weight is in the antennas, so it is possible to do it. Our kind of view was that that just created more material at the top of the tank, but again, you know, that's, you know, as you're kind of going through your standards and figuring out what needs to change, if anything, we appreciate that you may have different views on that.
Jonathan?
Well, one of the things from the last meeting was that I believe you were going to try to provide a picture of an existing generator, and there, I think there was a facility in Yarmouth that had one of these that was already built, the generator, the facility that's there.
Oh, the generator itself?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I might have missed, I thought we were looking for another example of shrouds, which we- shrouds, which we didn't have.
Okay, I thought it was going to be.
But I may have missed that, that may have been something that we had said, but it's a pretty standard generator that goes with most of our facilities, and I think
Just rely on them.
I think, I'm just wondering if the sound study has a picture of the generator. I know it has a picture of the cabinets. Just a quick look here. No, that's just a cabinet, those are just the cabinets. Yeah, we don't have a picture of the generator. Sorry about that.
A turn.
Scott, two questions.
Sure.
The first one, you can address after the public comment if you'd like, excuse me, but the concealment issue, as a threshold issue, applies also on the basic question of whether it's a permitted accessory use, because the definition of the alternative tower does include that concealment issue within the very definition.
Mm-hmm.
So if you don't satisfy that, you don't qualify for the accessory use, and you're sort of game over, and I'd like to hear your response on that.
Oh, sure.
You can wait if you'd like. The other one is at the site viewing, as you know, the noise issue is one of considerable sensitivity in the neighborhood, and we had talked about the possibility of within the stockade fence surrounding the equipment cabinets, you could put in some additional sound baffling panels, and I didn't see any feedback on that one.
Okay, yeah, I'll take those. So the first one about the concealment, this issue about the language in the ordinance and the permitted uses was part of the issue that was litigated at the federal court level, and the court dealt with this question of, well, if it says that you can only go on an alternative tower structure if you're concealed, and if you're not concealed, then you can't be a permitted use, but rejected that argument because it's obviously the case that when Ben looks at these, he's got to make a decision about whether it's fully concealed or not. Ones that aren't fully concealed go to you, and that's the process where you get to review those. So the way the court looked at it overall, when you look at the entire ordinance, it contemplates that some of these alternative tower structures will be fully concealed, and the planning board will never see those applications, and some will only be partially or won't be concealed, and those go to the planning board, and therefore, you couldn't read the ordinance in a way to allow them only if they were concealed, because then the whole planning board process would make no sense. So the issue of whether or not this is an alternative tower structure, and whether or not this is a permitted use, my view is that those were resolved by the court, and now the issue for the planning board is whether we comply with your standards, both in the wireless ordinance and site plan review. With regard to the fence, we circled back with our sound engineer, who did a revised report, and showed him the Ambrose report that had been submitted by one of the abutters, and asked him to kind of comment on that. What I really asked him to do was to be a little more detailed, and to do an executive summary that says, okay, here's what the limits are going to be. Here's what happens when the fan and the generator are both working, and we appreciate that you have all this technical detail, but the board really just needs to see your ultimate conclusion. So we had asked him to do that, he concluded that the sound of both the fan and the generator running during the daytime test will be 52, which is less than the 55 daytime standard, and when the fan is running just by itself, it'll be running, it'll be emitting somewhere between 33 and 45. So because it was at or below the standard, we haven't included any additional sound buffering on the basis that because we show that we meet the standard, none of that is required. So that was, just that's the explanation for why we didn't add that additional detail on the plan, because the engineer concluded that we met the standard without the additional fence or any kind of sound dampening material inside. I suppose the question for the board is, well, both, you know, what do you think about the report, and then also, do you want some sort of follow-up test to confirm that the modeling will comply? Obviously, if that's a condition, we would do whatever was necessary to comply at that point in time.
Well, we can address that further after the public comment. My own view, though, just for you to think about, is that if we're also thinking about co-location and other providers using this tower, which will also have associated equipment with it, the more we can do to keep the overall sound propagation down, even if you're within the limits, sitting there alone, I think it's probably worth thinking about, talking about.
Okay.
Let's move on to the public comment period. As I'm sure a lot of you folks know, what we do is have you come up one by one to the podium, give your name and address clearly, so we can get it down correctly, and then you'll have three minutes to make your oral points. We have a little timer, and if you see me going like this at you, that will mean your three minutes is up. You don't have to stop in mid-sentence, but please try to wrap it up quickly, because I think there are a lot of you folks here tonight who would like to talk, and to respect your fellow citizens' rights to make their point, we'd like you all to stay within the three limits, pardon me, the three minutes as best you can. Before we get into this, the board have any other comments or questions they'd like to pose?
Okay.
Let's go ahead with the public hearing part of it. If you'd like to come up one at a time, you can stand in line, or just sort of drift up as one person goes down, it's not a formal process. Yes, sir, why don't you take the podium?
Chairman Curry, members of the board, thank you. My name is Pavel Darling, I live at 9 Avon Road. My house is a direct abutter to the Water District's water tower, and mine is the closest residence to the site, as you well know from the site walk. I submitted written comments in advance of this, because I know that I have limited time here, so I would encourage you to read along if you'd like, but I'd like to first generally speak towards what my comments are, the purpose of my comments, and really they are to ensure that we have both accountability and transparency throughout this process. I'm not here to stop anything, I'm not here to make lives miserable, I really just want to make sure that we have all the information that we need, and that everything is kind of on the up and up. The comments and conditions that I put forth in my written comments are really directed towards those kind of goals, and I think they fall under the purview of the planning board, and that they're all conditions that if you would adopt them as part of the approval process, I think would fall under the ordinance. I'd like to talk very specifically about two of those conditions, and they're the first two in my letter. The first, and this is a serious issue for me, one that I raised at our last meeting, relates to the lead issue. I'm pleased to hear from Mr. Anderson that there will be no construction or operation of the facility prior to the tank being repainted and DEP being approved. I have yet to see that in writing, and so I urge the planning board to require that as a condition in writing, both that the tank is repainted, and that main DEP has signed off on any soil testing at that particular site prior to any activity from Verizon at the site. Second, in some sense, for me personally, because I have small children, that's not enough, and the condition, I think, should be expanded to also require ongoing testing and maintenance of that lead paint that will potentially be remaining on the water tank. To the extent that Verizon chooses to simply paint over the lead paint, as we now know, that paint will eventually disappear, and lead will essentially leach into the ground soil, that's something that needs to be dealt with now, or there will be no accountability for it. And I would urge the board, as a condition for approving this, to require Verizon, whether independently or with the Portland Water District, to come up with a plan, submit that plan, put it in writing. I suggest that it be posted to a website where there's, you know, testing, we know what's going on, we know when the paint has been dealt with, and we kind of just know what's going to happen. The second condition that I'd like to talk about is what I've called an enforcement mechanism, and it relates to that first one, in that all of the things that we've talked about are great when discussing what's going to happen, but as we go through this and several years go along, there are going to be a number of issues potentially at the site. The sound may get past the levels that are required, the trees that are planted may die, the paint may continue to erode, and we need some way to ensure that those things are dealt with in an appropriate manner. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Somebody else?
Oh, actually, I'm not the one with the picture.
Okay.
It's somebody else. I did email you about the picture, but it's not me.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, great. Good evening, my name is Brad Kaufman, I live at 1 Avon Road, and I just want to start by saying that I understand and appreciate the need for improved cellular service, and I support a facility at the water tower so long as that facility complies with the town's zoning ordinance. And I'd like to address two compliance issues. I'd like to start with the concealment issue, and I respectfully disagree with Mr. Anderson. I think concealment continues to be the standard, and in fact, what I'd like to do is read to you the next-to-last sentence of Judge Levy's order. He said, "Accordingly, Verizon's motion for summary judgment on count two is denied only as to the issue of whether the antennas will be concealed as required by ordinance sections 19-1-3 and 19-6-1." So according to Judge Levy, concealment continues to be the standard, and that is the standard to which you should hold Verizon. In its site plan application, Verizon acknowledges that it's not concealing the antennas, because it describes its design as minimizing visibility and visual impact. And we know that there is at least one other design option, and we would urge the planning board to consider it, and that is the wraparound shroud that has been asked about, and indeed, the same design that AT&amp;T proposed in 2014. The second issue I'd like to address is noise, and in its submission, Verizon said that nighttime operation of the generator during power failures is not subject to the limitations of the noise ordinance. That section, 19-9-5, limits intermittent sound produced by any activity on the site. Intermittent means occurring at irregular intervals, and any activity means, well, any activity. There are no exceptions in that section of the ordinance. So Verizon is essentially asking you to rewrite that section of the ordinance, but the planning board must apply the ordinance as written, and Verizon is going to have to add noise abatements to its, noise abatement to its proposal. I have no doubt that Verizon is capable of addressing these deficits and complying with the ordinance, the only question really is whether Verizon is willing to incur the cost necessary to comply with the town zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman, just one quick question, is your position that the wraparound shrouding would satisfy your concealment?
Actually, I really don't know. What I'm asking is that the planning board, I had sent a comment suggesting that the planning board request a photo sim of that wraparound shroud from Verizon, so that the planning board could evaluate that option. I don't know. I'm inclined to think that the wraparound shroud would be a better option for the reasons that Mr. Steinberg mentioned, but my request is really that we, that you ask Verizon for the photo sims, so that this planning board can evaluate whether that's a better way to meet the concealment requirement. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Priscilla Armstrong, I live at 18 Avon Road. As a result of the lawsuit undertaken by the town versus Verizon, Verizon can't invoke the Federal Spectrum Act and is required to go through site review and comply with town ordinances. I truly appreciate the time this board has taken, both here and on the site review, to consider this request, but I don't believe that the Verizon site plan meets all of the ordinance requirements. Specifically, I'm concerned about the buffers and security, section 19-8-12, 2C and F. I'm not going to read them to you, you have them. I don't really think that what Verizon plans to plant on the Avon roadside actually meets the ordinance requirements, but additionally, I'm concerned about the houses on Trendy Road, which actually have a better view of the tower than most people, other than the Darlings. The current fence is six feet tall, I measured it today. With the barbed wire going in horizontally, it's a little higher, but it is not eight feet, so the fence needs to be brought up to code. I would like to just state for the record that in 2004, the planning board, for the second time, rejected this site as a cell phone communications location. One of the stated reasons was that the site would not provide good coverage due to the wooded aspect of the area. The town at that time said that it needed to study cell phone coverage, and now it's 2016, and the council has it as a stated goal. Verizon has not been clear with at least the Avon Road neighbors about what neighborhoods would actually have improved cell phone coverage with this installation. I really would like to have a map on record, so that we know who is actually going to benefit from this. I don't believe it's going to be shore acres. I think that the town should follow the lead of Scarborough and authorize an independent study to determine once and for all where the coverage needs to be, and where the, more to the point, where towers need to be to, so that neighborhoods do have adequate cell phone coverage that best benefits the neighborhoods and the town. For example, a communication facility, if it could be adequately concealed at Fort Williams, the town would be receiving revenue, not the Portland Water District, which to me is a win-win solution. But if the water tower location on Avon Road is actually the best spot to alleviate cell phone communication deficiencies for some neighborhoods, so be it, but please hold Verizon accountable for meeting the ordinances we have in place. I would ask that is it possible to have a moratorium on this issue until the town council finishes its work? Verizon feels that this will have very little impact on us, but if you issue a permit, it will affect us, and I hope that if we do have it, it does actually benefit other neighborhoods.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Roy Herman, 2 Avon Road. I just wanted to bring up the subject of the cumulative effect if other co-locators come to the same site. The process with Verizon has been fairly laborious and detailed, and I'm wondering whether other companies that might come and use the facility, what standards are they going to be held to? I understand that AT&amp;T has for some time been paying towards a lease, which they took out on the site, so it would seem to me that's safe to assume that at some point, they will also come to the site. So the cumulative effect is a significant concern for me, living in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Curry and members of the planning board. My name is Anthony Armstrong, I'm a resident of 32 Lawson Road. I'm a licensed attorney, I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of Maine, and I also hold the degree, master's degree in city planning. Having reviewed Verizon's submission, I have concluded that it is deficient in several ways, which I have identified in four emails that I sent to the planning board last week, and I appreciate the fact that it looks like they've been reviewed. Some of these have been mentioned by other witnesses tonight, but these deficiencies include the inaccuracy in the plan that Scott referred to earlier regarding the whip antennas. I mean, that inaccuracy has been there for two years, I believe. It's very obvious, it's been very obvious all along, and it suggests that it's some minor deficiency or something that you missed. It's a major issue, it's on the wrong side of the tank, they're the wrong kind of antennas, they're 18 feet high, when in fact, the real antennas are on the other side of the tank, and they're much lower. And the reason this is a concern is because federal acts and the local ordinances that relate to this matter oftentimes relate to making changes that are over and above a baseline of height, and I'm very concerned that this 18-foot antenna might show up here at some point for purposes we don't know about, but just might be there and become a new baseline. And it is 18 feet, as indicated on the plan, and they're just not there, and the plan as submitted in C3 is not accurate. The buffer requirements have been addressed earlier, they just flat out, the tree plan that has been submitted, just flat out, does not meet the performance standards with regard to that aspect of a proposal. It's very detailed in the plan. It's very detailed in the plan. Lack of involvement of the Water District has also been referred to earlier, and I think it boils right down to this. They've got to have a legal written connection between their responsibility and the town. Up until tonight, there was nothing. Mr. Robinson is -- Mr. Anderson suggested there's some possibility of some connections that could be put in someplace, but it doesn't seem to run directly to the town from the Water District. The other issue that's been brought up tonight is the failure to take into account the future cellphone companies that we know are coming, especially under the Spectrum Act. The secondary I'd like to address is the judge's decision and the concealment issue. Brad Kaufman has expressed it very clearly. He's done much of the work here, and I've submitted a lengthy email to you folks about that issue. But the bottom line for me is, there is -- there are two sections in the ordinance. One has to do with what the Code Enforcement Office has to do with the planning board, and one has to do with the point that Chairman Curry made. And that will become a very, very important issue in this matter. I do not categorically agree with Mr. Anderson's interpretation of Judge Levy's decision. I just think he's got it wrong. Mr. Kaufman's got it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bob Cronin. I live at 7 Avon Road, and I've done so for the past 33 years. I don't know if you know the history of this. In the 1990s, Verizon applied for a -- to put a cell tone equipment on this tower. And at that time, it needed to be rezoned, and the planning board held hearings and refused to rezone. This is a neighborhood. It's -- this tower is very close to buildings, to houses selling for $500, $600,000. You wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, and we didn't want it in ours, and the planning board rejected it. They came before the planning board again in the 2000s, and again, the neighborhood turned out, and again, rezoning was rejected. So what did they do? What did the advocates do? Instead of saying, "Well, it keeps on failing before the planning board. Let's get rid of the planning board, and we'll define it as a permitted use." And I don't know about you, but when you lose a legitimate process twice in a row, and you change the rules so you win, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth. And I really think that that should leave a bad taste in your mouth. This is not about so much about Verizon's cellphones, but the development of a telecommunications complex. Once Verizon gets its foot in the door, AT&amp;T, which is already paying rent off of the tower, can come in. T-Mobile can come in. Sprint can come in because of the provisions of the Spectrum Act. And we really want that kind of intense telecommunications facility in an area that's residential, zone residence A, may read the purpose of Residence A. The Residence A District includes land outside the built-up areas of Cape Elizabeth, lands to which public sewers are not expected to extend in the near future, and large tracts suitable for farming, woodland production, wildlife habitat. The purpose of this district is to allow residential development that is compatible with the character, scenic value, and traditional uses of rural lands, and does not impose an undue burden on the provisions of municipal services. If Verizon gets in, this will develop into a telecommunications center, I predict, and it's not compatible with the town's comprehensive plan for development. I'd like to quote the New York Times about what 5G will mean to you, because it's not just about cellphones. It's about the whole telecommunications industry that's going to replace books in your house. All information will be stored in the cloud, and you'll download your cookbooks, your kids' textbooks, your novels, your encyclopedias. New York Times says, "Such technology will not come cheap. Carriers and telecommunications makers will have to install new hardware like cellphone towers in rural areas and tiny mobile hotspots in dense urban areas to reach 10 gigabytes per second target. They will have an increasingly reliance sophisticated software to manage the expanded exponential jump in mobile data traffic." Just so people's cellphones have risen, just as most people's cellphone bills have risen as they watch more videos and access more entertainment on their mobile devices. Expect operators to charge heavy premiums.
Pardon me, sir. Your time is up. I don't mean to interrupt you. Thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you for the public for coming out. I'm Aaron Budabah. I live at 15 Trendy Road. We're not a direct abutter, but we are definitely in sight of the tower as it looms over our backyard. I'm going to basically read over what I submitted to you in writing today, so the public can hear it as well. The big concerns for me and my family are noise and violation of noise levels, especially since my kids play outside in our peaceful backyard in the neighboring woods surrounding the water tower. Secondary and tertiary effects of cellphone companies, two and three, and possibly four, will come along after the Spectrum Act allows them to. Functional questions that I have are, what are the combined noise levels of each carrier's generators and HVAC equipment running at the same time? Seems to me that noise tends to add on top of itself. Last time I went to a basketball game, it worked that way. So if each carrier specifies equipment which is meeting code for the individual unit, then what about the combined units? Excuse me. Surely, we can argue that the combined noise will exceed the code requirements at the property line. Emotional appeal here is locating an industrial-use tenant within a stone's throw away from 11 or more children's homes. What this great farming town of Cape Elizabeth really wants? Is this how we want to plan our town? Seems the court was very clear in giving the power of this matter to you, the planning board, to approve or disapprove this project. So, solutions. Let's say the project does go ahead. Biggest detriment for me as a neighbor is the property value and also the noise value. Diesel is not the answer. I think that's one of the biggest concerns here. It's the cheapest answer. Everyone can agree it smells when it's running, it's noisy enough to hear, and it's not a natural noise. I think we can all agree at 45 or 55 decibels of noise coming from children playing is much more tolerable than a diesel engine running. I'd like to submit one of the many alternatives for backup power, one of which Verizon already uses in other locations, as well as all the other telecom companies. There are companies that provide zero emission fuel cell backup power units. None of this has been offered because technically upfront, it costs more. Long run, cheaper cost of ownership for the telecom companies. Now, there's no obnoxious smells, quiet running, happened to be very powerful when Hurricane Sandy came through, because it supplied most of the power when power was out on the grid. I provided a direct link to this one company. Closing remarks. I think in a modern world, we've abandoned our ancient landlines for our state-of-the-art handheld smartphones. So why does Verizon want to use ancient technology in their backup systems? If they do, then I think that they should hand in their smartphones for these new flip phones. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, general public, thank you. My name is Darrell Hemian. I live at 8 Avon Road. And I'm not going to beat a dead horse. A lot of my neighbors have made, I think, excellent points. I would just kind of -- some brief comments. I'm a technologist by profession, and I support the board's goal and the town's goal to have 100% cellphone coverage. And so if this application is approved, I just ask that you'd make any of the following reasonable considerations or stipulations on your approval that anybody would if it was in their backyard. The lead abatement issue by Mr. Darling, I think, is critical, and I would like to see that in writing. The noise ordinances, as my friend, Mr. Budabah, just talked about, I believe that alternative, quiet, friendly energy sources for the generators should be considered. And the real reason why I think this is -- and Aaron talked about this a little bit, too, is that if other companies come on board, we just want to be planful. That's all we ask of you, is to be planful for the future. I'm personally not doing anything to try to stop this project, but I just want us to be forward-thinking about what we can do for the future, and really thinking about what the equipment will look like, what it will sound like, and more importantly, what it will smell like. And to really put in some thought around, in the future, how do we check back in to make sure that cellphone companies are actually complying with the ordinances and not just a one-time approval? So thank you for your consideration in this manner.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Deb Hatton, and I live at 10 Avon Road. First, I just want to say this morning, I was asked to think of something that I was thankful for, and obviously, this meeting was on my mind, because the first thing I thought of was that I'm thankful that we -- Cape Elizabeth has a planning board, and you all are putting in such work to review this. I'm here to ask tonight that the town's zoning ordinance not be compromised because there's a big bully in town, and I'm sure I'm going to get criticized for that comment later. But Verizon's act of suing the town was not one of collaboration. It created an atmosphere of fear and intimidation. All we've asked from the start is that Verizon adhere to our process, our planning process and our codes. And right from the beginning, I think Verizon has violated our trust by admitting details and attempting to circumvent as much as they can. And in addition, I'd say that their claim that this is a safety issue is misleading and can pit neighbor against neighbor. Because this tower, this new tower is not going to solve our town's cell reception issues. It is going to give some residents better data, but it's not going to close the gaps that we have. It's also known that as cell usage expands, and think about how many devices that we all have, there's going to need to be more towers to support that bandwidth. What that means is that more Cape residents are going to find themselves in the same situation that we're in, grappling with town needs versus neighborhood values. I'm sure that they're going to want to know, just as we do, that their rights are protected, and that these big companies can't just come in and install what works best for them. But that's what this is. It's another standard installation. For them, it's about the profit. It's not about -- it's about getting on their -- another red dot on their map. It's not because they care about our people or our town. They'll never care, and I'm not asking them to, but I am asking that you ensure, before you approve their plan, one, that the details are accurate and they meet the ordinances for non-conforming lots, such as the noise, aesthetics, and safety concerns that have been raised, that you're proactively planning for the cumulative impacts of multiple cell carriers on their site, and three, that you're outlining site conditions that they must follow when upgrading equipment, because we know the technology will change. Verizon can afford, they can afford to address our concerns. When we remodel our homes, we often have to spend additional money to meet new codes. We want to know that Verizon will be held to that same standard, and that we have recourse if they don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name's Dana Crowe. I live at 5 Avon Road. Thank you for having us here tonight and talking about this issue. I haven't been all that engaged in this up until recently, and as I was thinking about it today, I'm a physician by training and occupation, and so I don't know a whole lot about concealment, or code, or anything else, but I do know how to read the medical literature. So in the last couple of weeks, I've been looking into, what do we really know about the effects of these types of, I think, well-described as industrial installations in densely populated areas, or even relatively densely populated areas? And the fact is, we don't know anything about them. It's been studied in some ways and in some fashion over time, but the consensus is that there is no consensus. We don't know what the health effects of one, two, three, or four of these giant, basically microwave-like ovens generating waves 24/7 are on people living in neighborhoods. So I just wanted to bring that perspective to the debate, because I think we're getting lost in a lot of technical detail without really thinking about what we know and what we don't know about the direct impact this may have. It takes 20 years to see a mutagenic insult come to fruition. Cellphone towers haven't been around that long. If this was a new drug or a new treatment, we would wait 10 or 15 years before we declared it safe. So I just wanted that opportunity to bring that point to the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
It's on the top of the desktop. Under Kaufman.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to, all of us, to speak our concerns for this evening. The point the gentleman just raised earlier, I -- I'm sorry.
Your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Todd Forsyth. I live at, actually, this is my backyard. I live at 13 Trendy Road. As you can see, that my backyard extends into the woods, and Aaron is my neighbor who spoke a little bit earlier. I would say that my yard is a stone's throw from the tower. It's actually more of a stone's toss, because it's actually, once you get in my backyard, it's very, very close. And I just want to go back to the point I was making earlier about the gentleman who just spoke for me, and I apologize if I didn't catch your name, but that is something I have not heard in a point that I've had, something that I've raised a number of times with others in this conversation, but I've not heard in this conversation, in this room, and I think is very valid, and it needs to be heard. And a lot of the other issues that I had scribbled down earlier before prior coming were articulated much better by some of the other individuals that came before me. I'm not, I don't stand here really in opposition to this tower. It scares the hell out of me, what he just said a few minutes ago. I do have two small children, but what I will say, I recognize there is need for cell coverage in the community and the cities or the town of Cape Elizabeth intent to extend that to others who are struggling in that area. What I, I will stand and just might take my two minutes to talk quickly about really ensuring that we have ongoing testing of the promises that Verizon is making within the covenants, so that the ordinance, within the ordinance requirements around the noise, around the maintenance of the location. Aaron spoke to the smell of diesel. I mean, there's a lot that's being committed to by Verizon. I know that when it's a year from now, when I'm having an issue in my backyard, Scott is not going to be the individual that I'm going to be able to call. So I would, I would ask that the board consider that and make sure that that is written in whatever agreement takes place. The other big concern I have, obviously, it's been voiced a number of times, is co-location. We all know that AT&amp;T is on site at this time, right? They've had a lease in place for two years. It's, doesn't take much to infer as well that we're going to have Sprint and, as well as possibly others on that site. So in my backyard, I'm looking at possibly three to four different small sheds around that, three to four different cables running up the side, aerials all the way around it. That's not really the vision I had for, you know, my backyard, my neighbor's backyard, and for the community that I live in. So I just, I appreciate my time that I've had, and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Beth Lubetkin, and I live at 16 Salt Spray Lane in the Broad Cove area. So I'm not one of the Avon Road people, but I certainly understand all the comments and your need to ensure that things are done correctly and monitored on an ongoing basis. I'd like to thank the planning board and for the town for elevating the importance of gaining cell coverage. We are one of those households that have very poor and frequently no cell coverage, and there are many people in town, as I think you know from hearing from others and the petition that was put up by some other folks to obtain cell coverage. So I am in support, obviously, and I think a lot of these folks are, too, of getting 100% cell coverage. This seems like a good way to start. I would be interested also to know what exactly coverage is going to be obtained from it. I'm expecting it will be much better than it is, but I want to stress again the importance to all of those in town that do not have good coverage. Not only those of us who live here, but the visitors that we get, the trades-- here, but the visitors that we get, the tradespeople that we get, and I think there is a safety issue when people cannot use their cellphones in a number of locations in town. So, we have to bear that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to be heard?
Chairman Curry, excuse me, board, I'm Frank Bolino from 35 Hunts Point Road. I am another one of those folks, not from the Avon Road area, and I respect everything that's been said by them. I want the board to look at this carefully, but I also want them to consider the safety of the folks who use cellphones when they go out for a walk with, in my case, a small grandchild. If there's an accident, if there's something going on, I have no way to call out. At home, I run a landline because I have to, but when I'm out, I cannot. There are trails, there are beaches, there are other places where you cannot call for help if needed. So, please consider that, along with all of the ordinance and other technical information. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other people who wish to be heard, I'll close the public part of the meeting. Excuse me, thank you all very much for showing up and for sharing your ideas with us. Much appreciated. The next step in the process is for the board to discuss its views on this. The options we have are to approve, approve the conditions, table, or deny. I've taken the liberty of kind of organizing these various issues into a series, into a series. What I'd like to do, I think, is have the board talk about each issue separately, partly so that each member can be heard on the issue and so that we don't digress from one, pardon me, from one issue to the next and lose track of where we are. The order, the issues and the order they're in is as follows. One would be concealment, which I mentioned earlier, I think it's a threshold issue as to whether this application can proceed at all. Two is lead paint. Three is noise. Four is location, co-location, pardon me. And then there, at this point, there are a number of items which are, I suppose, of a more minor category, but still important. One is the access, access lane to the property. We had discussed at the site walk, perhaps organizing the access 24-foot wide passageway and doing some, laying out parking areas or mulching over or doing something with the rest. The fence height, which Mr. Anderson has actually undertaken to assure that it will be eight feet, so that may not be an issue any longer. Having a performance guarantee and abandonment, Verizon picking up the cost, these are items which I think are probably not going to be too controversial. On concealment, what I'd like to do is just kind of lay out what I think the problems are, and then I'd really like to have everybody pitch in. And I'm not familiar with the provisions of the district court opinion. I don't know what they've decided, what they haven't, so I'm looking at this sort of afresh. This is not a tower overlay district. It's a residential A district, so we are now, we're operating under the accessory use provisions of that district, which require that the alternative tower structure be used. This is where I think the important language is, and it wasn't mentioned tonight. That alternative power structure is defined as follows. Mounting structures such as, but not limited to, clock towers, bell steeples, utility and light poles, and water towers. Conceal the presence of antennas or towers and which are used primarily for purposes other than to support the antenna. There is no single alternative tower structure that this definition contemplates. It's basically, it could be anything that's big enough to hold and does something else that can be used to hold the antenna. And there is that crucial language, conceal the presence of antennas or towers. If you don't get over that hurdle, you don't get to the next point, which Mr. Anderson described, of the code enforcement officer then saying, well, I can issue a permit or I can decide that there hasn't been concealment, so I'll refer to the planning board for site plan approval. The construction of the ordinance is a little bit tortured, I think, but I think there's only one way you can look at it to make any sense of it, and that is, first of all, the word concealment is a little bit of a relative term, and I think there's a rule of reason we'll have to apply here. Mr. Armstrong in his comment, it wrote at some length about the, if this was a church steeple or a bell tower, of course, the antenna would be inside the bell tower to conceal it, and certainly that would be the case. But there are other examples, such as utility and light poles, which you're simply not going to make the antenna invisible. It's impossible. Water towers, if it was full of water, you couldn't put your things inside. It would have to be on the outside. So, in my view, the concealment to qualify for the accessible, accessory use is going to have to be viewed in light of all the circumstances of the location, excuse me, and the type of installation they're talking about. We have here something which will not make the antenna invisible. I think to say concealing the presence of means to make it invisible is an overreading of the statute. So, we would have, I think we have to decide whether the technique they're talking about using here with the shroud painted to match the color of the antenna, some 60 to 70 feet off the ground, is sufficiently obscuring the presence of the antenna on the, on the installation to qualify for the ordinance. Any of you folks have some ideas or thoughts on this? Henry?
First, I'd like to say that when I visited the tower initially, I hadn't been up there before, but I was confronted with a, which looked like a rotting rust bucket, and it didn't look very good. So, I'm surprised that there's so much attention to the fact of the aesthetics of it, that it will look bad as a commercial installation. It's not going to go away. I don't think, it's been there, what, 80 odd years or so, and I don't think anybody's going to pull it down. So, from that perspective, repainting it and reusing it, in my view, is a good idea. The point about concealment rather than about the shroud effort that I made before was, it looks a little bit off-kilter. There is a, there is a, I don't know if you've seen, I can't remember if you took a view up, but we do have a picture of it, simulated picture of it. Well, that's as it exists now, of course, which is a pretty rusty thing, and I'm surprised by the way that it's never been maintained for that appearance, but that's not concerning. And there's this one here, and the appearance of a half, thank you, by the way, the appearance of half a shroud around, it sort of brings your eye up to it rather than lets it merge into it. If you, in my view, if you put the shroud all the way around, you're going to have enough angle that you'd have to get back so far to be able to see the tops of the antenna that they'd more, the whip aerials, that they'd more or less disappear. And I don't think that five or six or seven really makes any difference. There's a different point about the health issue. That's not to do with this, as the chairman just said, but I think if the shroud is all the way around, I think it's going to look like a complete installation and nothing specifically different about it. You know, they're just a few posts that you might be able to see from a distance, but the angle, I mean, you've got to look up at 80 degrees, so you're going to shroud quite a lot of it before you start, and if the shroud is made far enough out, I don't think you'll see the aerials at all. Another question of whether you like the shroud, but that's, that's-
Can I follow up with a related? So, if you were to do a shroud all the way around, would you be able to co-locate other antennas under that shroud so that, that we would just have one appearance for the rest of-
Not, not usually, and because there usually needs to be a kind of a six to 10-foot vertical separation between the antennas of different carriers so that the antennas do not kind of interfere with each other. So, that's when you see a co-located tower. Usually, they're stacked. Putting them on the same elevation normally doesn't work.
But, forgive me, this is just slightly different, but as far as I know, don't cell companies share the equipment at places, not rather, not other than having different aerials? They share the same point?
No, actually, each carrier would have its own equipment cabinet installation because they each have FCC licenses for slightly different frequencies, so it's kind of a package deal.
So, Scott, you're saying basically that the surrounding, shrouding the entire top with a single shroud would then inhibit the co-location function?
No, I think the question was, if we ran a shroud all the way along, could the next carrier come in and put their antennas in the empty sections of the shroud, as opposed to having to do another, you know, layer on the tower? And I don't think I've ever seen a co-location at the same elevation, and what I've been told by Chip and the RF engineers is, you normally need six to 10 feet of separation between each one for them to work-
In height or-
In, in height. So, you'd, I think the original proposal when AT&amp;T was looking at the site was to have it be, you know, eight to 10 feet below the band that was going for the Verizon antennas.
Other observations on concealment? I guess one other point I would make too is that the, this tower is not a pristine cylinder. In addition to being kind of beat up, you do have other features on the surface of the, of the tower. You have the ladder going up, you have the catwalk around it, so there's stuff going on up there. Whether you have an antenna which in three different locations is shrouded as to the location or something more inclusive, I'm not sure what you've accomplished by adding additional shrouding.
Well, it looks a bit off-kilter when you've got three of them.
Well, and, you know, five years from now, there may be two or three more antennas up-
Well, I don't know whether you can, because you've got to have 10-foot, you've got to have 10-foot vertical height, so you could either put them up another 10 feet above it or 10 feet below it. So, you know, to a degree, if you take, put three, three sets of antennas up there, you've more or less limited it, unless you've filled up or go down. That's assuming that what you've said-
Yeah, I mean, we don't know what someone else would need, but normally, they need to go above or below, and I don't think the ordinance allows it to go above. There may be some limits on extending the height, but it would, it would need to go above. I mean, I think the question for the board is, what the chairman has identified, which is, is concealment a standard that you're even applying anymore? And we tried to kind of set out in our application the performance standards, both under site plan review and the tower standards. This concealment word and its whole concept exists in the zoning, you know, of the site, which we think was resolved by the court, but, so if you decide that concealment is an issue, then you, I agree, you have to go to the question of, you know, whether or not what we propose meets the standard. I think the only actual standard that applies to this issue is that color standard. There's a bunch of standards when you go through the wireless for, you know, structural support and removing the equipment. I think the color one is the only one. You don't really have a kind of a blanket visual impact standard or something like that. So, I'm not sure that this is an issue, but I think, but I just want you to know that if, if you elected to do it all the way around, I don't think there's any technological reasons that it can't be done. I just think it's going to look bigger at the top, but to the extent that falls within your wheelhouse, then no.
Well, unless the US District Court has ruled definitively on the issue, I still think you have a permitted use question that involves-
Yes.
-concealment. And my point, I guess, and this is my personal view now, is that, excuse me, concealment is going to be a relative thing that's going to be based on the circumstances. We have a tower, it is somewhat in the woods. Granted, there are residences nearby, but visually speaking, it is what it is. And to the extent that the tower can be spruced up, painted, and if antennas can be put up and around the top of the tower and masked and painted to mask, to match the tower, they don't, they're not invisible, their presence, you're going to know something's underneath those shrouds, but I think visually it will, there will be enough concealment to satisfy at least my own perception of the statute of the ordinance. Joe?
Well, yeah, I'd agree with you. I mean, I think that, to the extent that those, I don't think the adding those three shrouds is going to turn that from an acceptable eyesore into an unacceptable eyesore. I mean, I think that it's what it is, as you said.
I think you're doing the best you can under the circumstances of externally attaching to a tower. I mean, you can, you can have attachments on a utility pole to qualify as an alternative tower structure, and utility poles have to be one of the ugliest creations we have, and we got lots of them all over the place. There's some things you simply have to live with, I think. Elaine?
I'm kind of going back a step. Can you explain how you chose the particular location of the shrouds that are there? Does it have to do with site views from various roads? Why did you choose those three spots?
So, those three spots correspond with the location at the top of the tower for the three sectors based on where they need to send a signal in order to meet the coverage objectives of the site. So, what the RF engineers do is they identify where you have a gap in coverage. They have to locate a, a structure at a, at a particular altitude that will allow it, the signal to get out and fill that gap, and then they have to figure out exactly where to place and where to aim the three antenna bands in order to fill in that area. So, you imagine them like pie pieces going out from each one of the three arrays, and there will be some overlap as you go farther away from the tower, but the location has been set so that this site will maximize the amount of improved service associated with the facility. And then the shrouds just go over where the engineers determined they had to put the antennas and where they had to aim the antennas.
So, the, the physical structure of the antenna is located directly inside of each shroud?
That's correct.
And the size of the shroud is roughly the same as the size of the antenna structure in-
Yeah, and you can see from the simulation, the one kind of on the left, each one of the shrouds, the three shrouds, will contain four antennas that are kind of equally spaced throughout that box, and it's the same for each one of the three arrays.
And the areas that do not have any shroud do not have any antenna-
That's correct. So, you can see the one section that is looking kind of right at, at you from this position, there are no antennas proposed for that kind of quadrant of the top of the tank, and that is just because that when the engineers did it, that wasn't the important area to shoot the signal. It's coming from the other three areas identified by where the antennas have been proposed.
Do you have a coverage map? It sounds like you do somewhere. There's been a lot of interest expressed in what this will achieve if it's granted.
Yeah, and we could, I mean, some towns have a requirement to submit an RF report, and your ordinance didn't, so we didn't, you know, Chip never gave it to me to give to you, but we could certainly obtain a copy of that and provide it to the town, and the town could put it on some website, which will show both where the existing coverage is and how this one will kind of fill in the gap in coverage. So, that, that's something I can get and give to the town.
That would certainly meet needs expressed by a number of the speakers tonight. Okay, anything else on concealment? You want to move on to lead paint?
I guess I have one more comment on that. We've been talking about the interpretation of a legal decision, and it's, I would wonder whether that question has been put to our town attorney. What is, what's his interpretation of that legal decision? Or have we asked for that?
He is on board with this going to the planning board, and the planning board considering this application.
Which means that-
I have nothing specifically in writing from him.
So, that we could consider something other than 100% masking of visibility?
We have not asked that specific question.
Okay.
It's a tricky question. I, it's, to make any sense of it, though, it seems to me you have to get away from a pure, it's either invisible or it's not, and that's, I'm not sure how we face this as a board. Does the board want to ask your advice from the town council?
Well, to me, it's kind of similar to the question we look at when we talk about buffering a subdivision, and what does it mean to provide buffering? And in pretty much every case, we conclude- much every case, we conclude that buffering is not the same as 100% blocking of view, that buffering is always related to the location, and buffering is related to the surrounding uses, but it doesn't mean 100% masking of whatever is going on on the other side.
They use the expression conceal the presence, and that, does that mean conceal 100%? Does it mean obscure? It's?
Camouflage.
It's a fair question.
But even, even the word camouflage is not 100% blocking of visibility. So I would think that.
It's an optical illusion.
It's more consistent with the other parts of our ordinance to interpret this as, under the circumstances, a reasonable blocking of visibility from the surrounding uses.
Because the definition of alternative tower structure covers so many different types of situations, from the church steeple where, by all means, the thing would go up inside the steeple, and that's frequently the way it's done, to utility poles where it's clearly external, to water towers, which could be internal or external, and then really anything else that kind of fits into that general scheme of things. So I, I just cannot bring myself to say it really means conceal as in nobody would ever know it's there. If that's what they meant, I think they would have said it.
Have we seen any drawings that show sort of the line of sight of the antennas from various places on the ground where residents in the area might be?
The simulation that we provided was just this one from kind of the road in front of the tank.
But the angle, you have to be away from it to see the top of the, of the antenna, is quite a steep angle. Remember, it's off the ground, so a lot of it's camouflage. I may use that word now.
But the neighbors are not at the bottom of the?
Well, they are. They're, well, okay, so they're, they're at 30 feet at the maximum. They're up at 30 feet, so the angle is not quite so steep.
I mean, there is significant vegetation around, but you can see from the one gentleman's photograph that when there's no vegetation on the trees, the tank is most certainly visible from some perimeter by a group of the abutters. I think that what we've tried to do is do the installate, we appreciate that we can't hide the tank, and that the tank is still going to be there. The tank continues to be the biggest visual thing on the site. What we've tried to do is, you know, do a site so that if someone came after it was painted and installed, they would walk up to this point, and they would say, wow, that's a really big tank. But they wouldn't go, oh my gosh, who cares about the tank? Look at those shrouds on the top and the equipment at the base. So we've tried to kind of do it in a way that, you know, the tank is going to be there, but to minimize the impact as much as we can and conceal the antennas as much as we can, you know, so people seeing that it's this additional thing that's been attached.
Right. My last thought was that if, if the shroud went right the way around, it would look less industrialized. That was all. I think because of the fact it's broken, it just, and a catwalk around it, it looks a little bit more industrialized than if it was a, a complete shroud. That's just my personal aesthetic value, but.
I'm sorry.
Isn't one thing, and I don't mean to muddy the waters completely, but with the other accessory utilities that go along with this, would that also count as part of whether or not there's concealment? Because obviously, this is something new that's being brought into the area. It's not going up the tower, but on the ground is something that is going to be new. So there's sort of acknowledgement by the applicant that this is a new structure, and the neighborhood is going to have to deal with whatever goes along with this, and that's what we're here to review, so.
Are you talking about the, the concrete pad with the spade fence?
Yes.
Yeah, and that actually is not part of the tower itself, it's associated with it, but I'm not sure.
That's why I muddy the waters when it comes to that, because.
I don't know. I always took the antenna as, and the stuff down below is really being two different things.
But nevertheless, it's one installation, and, you know, I sympathize with the people around it, saying, look, this now looks like it's some sort of commercial or industrial thing.
We have a note that we received from Ben dated today that says we need to consider this in two parts, and I think this goes to Jonathan's question. The concrete pad is one thing, and I think that's our site plan, and the antenna at the top of the tower is the antenna is the other half of this. And they're really, I mean, they're both necessary for the project, but they're two separate issues, two separate things to look at. That's the way I interpreted our, our note from Ben.
No, I, I agree with you. I don't think the concealment issue applies to the cabinets. I haven't really thought about it. That's kind of my gut reaction. Let's, if people have no more thoughts at the moment, what I'd like to do is go down through these other issues, and we're going to come up with sort of a sense of the board as to whether we should try to act tonight or table it to the next meeting with some additional information to, to come. Lead paint, we, we have now an undertaking on the notes to the plan, and you've said yourself that, in more detail really, that Verizon would not proceed until the tower has been scraped, repainted. They've, you've said they have remediated the existing soil around the tower?
That's correct.
And they propose to do a follow-up testing after the repainting, is that correct?
Yeah, so there was a, I think there was a report that had been submitted previously by one of the abutters of the reports of the initial sampling, which showed they had completed the, I must admit, I didn't go through that in great detail, but my understanding was, that was a report certifying that their initial remediation work had addressed the DEP's concerns. Then, what I understand from the, the Water District is, the DEP is requiring them to retest the soil after they paint the tower, and if there's any further work that needs to be done, that that will be done at that time. What we've tried to do is put a note on the plan that shows that, basically, we will do whatever the DEP requires us to do. So I appreciate that there's this issue, and there's an undergoing activity, and the Water District is going to have to meet whatever standards the DEP has decided are appropriate for this activity. We will comply with all of that. But I think respectfully, I think that that's, the DEP will regulate that and impose whatever kind of follow-up conditions are required. We will make sure we comply with those. So I'm not sure that that's an issue for the board, that the board would take on as a going-forward enforcement matter. But I just wanted to give you kind of our understanding of the legal situation and arrangement here.
Well, let me ask you, this is a question. I, I guess I agree that the DEP driving the supervisory bus is the right way to do it, but I've heard some expression of interest tonight that we would have something in writing involving the Water, Portland Water Company and Verizon as to this process, about the, you know, the painting and whatnot. Would you be willing to reduce that? We have a note on the plan, which is a little bit less robust than a separate agreement to which Portland Water District could be a party?
Yeah, so the only kind of writing that we have is the lease agreement that we have with the Water District. What we normally provide to municipal boards is the memo of lease, which we gave in your packet, because it doesn't contain the commercial terms. For the Water District, it's a little different, because they have to disclose things. But, so in our submission on March 2nd, we went through what the lease requires. So we have that document. I mean, I could give the board a kind of redacted version of the lease, or the section from the lease that talks about this arrangement, showing that, that the Water District is going to do this painting, and we're not coming on site until it's done, and what our payment arrangements are, if that would be helpful. I'm not aware of, of any written DEP enforcement order, largely because the way this evolved, the Portland Water District agreed to go ahead and do this remediation, just because the issue would come up, and they were fine with doing it. I'm, I'm not sure that this is actually a, a DEP violation, or that this has been reduced to any kind of order. But we could certainly get from the Water District, if there was any kind of documentation with the DEP, what those were and provide those to the board if they're, I mean, they're going to be public records.
Caroline?
The, as far as the painting and the, the lead remediation, that is, to me, this is my opinion on what I've read, clearly the responsibility of the Portland Water District in conjunction with DEP. And the only thing I personally would like to see is, in our findings of facts, or in our, our findings in our motion, is acknowledgement that that will be done. It will be done by Portland Water District, it will be done, just that statement that you made earlier, you know, Portland Water District will do the lead remediation, it will paint, it will retest the soil and do any lead remediation prior to Verizon coming on site and doing. And that's when Verizon's job begins, is after Portland Water District's job ends. That's my interpretation of what I've read.
Well, Caroline, let me ask you, if the onus is on Portland Water District to be doing a lot of this, and they are not contractually bound to the Town of Cape Elizabeth on this project, I'm wondering if that isn't something that should happen?
They are contractually bound to Verizon to do it.
Well, right, but, but not to the Town of Cape Elizabeth. We, we have, we have no recourse against Portland Water District.
The Department of Environmental Protection is responsible for making sure they do that, lead remediation appropriately. That's my interpretation.
Yeah, no, my own thinking, and I'm not totally.
My, Peter?
Is it would be useful to have a contractual linkage between the Town of Cape Elizabeth and the Water District, which has not done a great job of maintaining this tower going forward, particularly since the Water.
But I see that as two different issues. And then another big thing I heard here tonight, and I want to hear, I, I think we should talk about, is ongoing maintenance and how it's handled. So I see those as two separate things. And who is responsible for ongoing maintenance? Is it Portland Water District who owns the tower, even though they're leasing space on it? Portland Water District owns that site. So who, who handles ongoing maintenance?
This project is ongoing. I see no reason why not to collapse them together. And when they're leasing this facility now to Verizon, you know, later to other carriers, it would seem to me that we could get this under control with a relationship with the Water District, answering to the Town of Cape Elizabeth, and that would be probably a, a good step to take, personally.
Peter?
John's coming down there.
John?
Just to kind of piggyback off Carol Lance's point, if you got the permits, if Verizon received the permits, and Portland Water District either delayed or wasn't able to paint the, or get the painting done, I mean, are you guys on hold while that happens?
Well, I mean, I suppose they would be in violation of the lease, but the agreement to paint the tank and for us to pay for it wasn't because we needed to do that as part of the installation. It was kind of a, just a negotiated term, where the Water District said, all right, we'll let you come on, but, you know, this thing needs to be painted, and, so we want you to pay for it, and we agreed to it. So, I mean, I suppose if the Water District just totally blew that off and decided not to do it, Verizon would have the option of either installing on the unpainted tank, or, you know, going to court and try. My guess is that Verizon Wireless would just install their equipment on the tank, because the, the repainting is, in our view, is not, is not necessarily to install the equipment. We didn't think it was necessary to comply with the town's standards anywhere, but we just were doing it because we were trying to be good folks and work with the Water District and give them an amenity as part of this deal. So I think that, but, but, I mean, I have no reason to believe that the Water District isn't going to do this, because we're going to pay the bulk of the costs, and they do want to have it repainted, and it's better for long-term maintenance for them, and so I expect that will happen.
Has there been any talk of the possibility that DEP could step in and say, no, we're going to have to get this whole thing stripped and then repaint it, and all of a sudden your costs go through the roof? Is that?
Well, we're, I mean, we're on the hook for the first $50,000. If the, I mean, my understanding is the DEP has already worked this out with the Water District. The Water District has done what was expected with regard to the soil remediation, and then they're going to do a test after they repaint, but that's going to be related to some minor impacts as part, part of the painting process. I think, as we talked about before, there's all kinds of procedures they use to make sure that when they do this and they grind the tank and they scrape it, that the stuff doesn't go.
I just want to, I don't think I, I understand your comment about Verizon and the Water District lease agreement, and if the Water District doesn't hold up, hold up its end of the painting, that Verizon can move ahead. But I don't believe you could, because you've added that note to the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So that even if, for some reason, the Water District does not go ahead with that note on the plan, the intent was that somebody has to finish the lead remediation, that someone has to make sure that that letter from the DEP is complied with in terms of scraping and repainting and testing before you get to go on there. So when, when you made the comment, oh, I think we could still go ahead, I, if that note is on the plan, I, I don't think you could.
Well, our intention was to put a note on the plan that obligated us to do whatever the DEP required. If the DEP were to go back to the Water District and say, hey, look, you cleaned up the soil. If you've decided not to paint it now, and you're not going to be scraping it and doing any of that, then you're all set. Don't worry about it. You don't have to repaint. I don't think repainting was part of it. It was the soil remediation. But our intent was to put something that was broad enough that no matter what the DEP required, we would have to comply with it, with the understanding that ultimately they'll sort out what needs to happen.
And you're okay with that as a president?
Yeah, we're okay with that.
You were saying that Verizon would still be bound to complete, assure the painting was done before it proceeded. The thing that bothered me is that the Water Company is commercializing and monetizing this big hunk of stuff up on the hill, and they're getting, you know, they're getting paid for it. And I, I don't see any reason not to have them contractually in the game, at least with respect to the painting and the ongoing maintenance of the facility. Because it's going to only get more important as you get more antenna sprouting off of this thing. And I don't, I don't see the need that's kind of not bothers the Water Company. I think on, in that point, they should be involved.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that, I mean, what's going to happen is, is what we negotiated in the lease, which is, we get a permit, we notify them, they're ready to paint the tank, they've worked out this scenario with the DEP already. Everybody wants it to happen, and we're willing to pay for it. We wanted to make sure that we had something down there that said that we would comply with whatever the DEP imposed, with the understanding that ultimately, DEP has to make this decision. And I'm not, I don't know if there could be a change in their thoughts, either more stringent or a different condition, but understanding that whatever happens will continue to comply with the DEP standard. I think the, I mean, I think ultimately, you need to impose these conditions on us as the applicant. Because the Water District is not currently before you, I'm not sure that the planning board can have a condition of our approval that would bind them directly. So I don't know if that's a good statement for me to make or not, but I think it's accurate, that whatever you need to be comfortable, and I'm hoping this DEP, we're subject to the DEP, is enough to make you comfortable. But ultimately, whatever you see fit, I think, has to be imposed upon us directly.
Peter, go ahead.
Yes, Elaine, and then Caroline.
It seems to me that since we don't have in front of us anyone who can tell us directly what the DEP has required, that I'm wondering if we can't condition this permit in a way that says that no construction or other work can happen by Verizon on the site until the code enforcement officer has received sufficient certification from the DEP that all lead remediation work has been completed.
Yeah, my guess.
And that's not exactly what you're saying here.
No, it, that's kind of like an open-ended statement that will comply, but you're asking for, you know, us to kind of get the, I call it the DP, get them to send me a letter that says the Water District is all set, and then I give that to you before we pull, pull a building permit to install. I think that probably would be fine.
Right.
Elaine, and, Caroline, here.
Oh, I, I was going to go somewhere where Elaine went, and as always, she said it better than me. But I also would add, I want to see that tower painted. We talked about what an eyesore it is, a rusty eyesore is, and I don't really care who paints it. I want to see it painted. And I think that should be part of the condition.
That was my question, supposing the DEP says, eh, don't worry about painting, doesn't, you know, we don't.
The DP doesn't care about paint. They care about the lead remediation.
Yeah, and the Water District and Verizon intend to have that thing painted. That's part of our deal. It's a part of the terms of the lease, and unless somebody's going to, I, I don't think the Portland Water District is going to violate the lease, especially with how much publicity there is on this whole case. So we expect them to comply. We're going to write them the check, so. And, and I guess we've given you an application that shows the tank is painted, and you're going to reach some sort of conclusion that the shrouds are adequately concealed, because it matches the color of the newly painted tank. So if the tank doesn't get painted, we probably have a problem with our planning board approval.
You're going to have to find rust-colored shrouds.
Speckled and rusty.
So just so I understand you, then, you have no problem with a more robust undertaking by Verizon, that it will not proceed until these various things have happened, including the painting of the tower, regardless of whether the DEP requires it or not?
Yeah, I mean, I, and I guess if there was some crisis that's unexpected, we'd have to come back to you for an amendment, and you'd have to deal with it at this point in time. But I'm not expecting that, so I'm fine with that. I think getting something and writing from the DP is just an extension of the note that we and writing from the DEP is just an extension of the note that we put on the plan that already obligates us to comply with whatever the requirements. We're going to have to check in with the DEP and ourselves get, you know, some sort of sign-off that we can go, so we can make sure we're complying with that note on the plan, and asking them to reduce it to writing is not anything that we're going to object to.
And not to beat a dead horse here, because it seems like you're totally willing to go with this, but this note specifically only goes to any soil remediation work conducted by the property owner. So you're saying that you'd be more open if, for some reason, some other thing comes up about lead paint that the DEP requires?
So long as it's tied to the tower and the site, I think.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine, too.
All right.
Can you just give me one second? There's just a question. I mean, we've been at it two hours, and we do have an applicant, and we'll be at this for quite a bit longer. Do we ever stop, take care of the other applicant, and then come back?
Your planning board rules state that you don't take any items after, new items after 10:00 p.m., unless you agree to suspend the rules. I'm pretty sure the applicants would like to be heard tonight, so the question would be, do you think you can move it along?
I'm not sure we'll cover all this ground and get it organized is what we may require of them, and I'm wondering, would it make any sense to, with the applicant's permission?
I would not like to interrupt what's going forward now to take up another item. I'd rather move on with this one and potentially suspend the rules and go past 10:00.
Any other members have a different...
Yeah, I'd agree with Carol Ann.
Good. All right. We'll keep charging ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think that one is at least under some semblance of control. The next issue is noise, which is, we've had a lot of discussion from the public about. We've had some expression of opinions within the board. Would you like to talk about that a bit? Carolyn?
Thank you. I'm trying to remember. I'm trying to go back to who said something. Suggestion, and I think it might have been this nice gentleman at the podium, willingness to do a post-installation test to make sure that the noise that has been, that has been, numbers that have been come up with actually comply.
Yeah, and I should talk a little bit about our revised study. You know, the, I mean, you have this issue that Brad raised about the emergency generator and whether its emergency functions are subject, so, again, at the risk of flagging something that, you know, I don't want to really talk about, I think you have to deal with that. And then I think the other question is, when we did this assessment, the thing that's running continuously is the one fan that keeps this little cabinet cool and, you know, warm and not damp. The prediction, based on the engineers, is that it's going to be 33 decibels. That's the noise that this cabinet is going to make. When the generator runs, it only runs for 20 minutes. That will be under the 55. I think I mentioned before that a normal conversation without a microphone is like 60 decibels, so even if your daytime standard is below that of a normal conversation. Libraries are at 35, so this fan is going to be running at library sound 24 hours a day, you know, seven days a week. There is a condenser that will kick in when it gets hot to deal with the moisture that collects inside. The engineers don't believe that that will create any additional sound, but our modeling expert decided that there would be some additional sound with that and added this kind of fudge factor of 12 dB A, mostly because he understood that 45 was the standard, but we think it will be well below that. So that's with the existing setup with the three-sided wooden fence. I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, that you had asked about the additional section of fencing and some insulation. That would definitely drop this 33 down into the 20s, which becomes, you know, quieter than a cat walking around on your kitchen counter. So it is possible to make it quieter. We had proposed what we'd proposed because you have a pretty stringent sound standard, and we believed that we met it. We're certainly fine with having a post-construction survey where we dug out the guy who did the survey and have him test it, and go out there with Ben and do the test to confirm that it's at 45, but we expect it's going to be significantly below 45, even under the worst-case scenario. And then I can talk about the generator thing if that's really something that is of concern to the board.
Peter.
Yeah, Henry.
I mean, the decibel, which is just plain measurement of sound, but another gentleman pointed out that there are differences in frequency sounds. So you could have a frequency that stands out, but it's not necessarily very loud because it doesn't match in with the environment. So, you know, I don't know what, in a room, you know, with something like in here with some other bits and pieces, we might not hear, we wouldn't hear anything up to about 60 decibels, really, I guess, but if it's an unusual sound, like this suddenly came out of my cell phone, you'd hear it. Because of the frequency, it just doesn't match in. So that's my only question, is people living close by, a strange sound or a strange frequency. I didn't notice there was a frequency symbol in here, but I just wondered how it would fit into the ambient sound around.
Yeah, I think in the, kind of, the body of the report, Doug talks about the nature of this sound, and if everybody stops for just a second, you can hear the fan that is running the coolant on the projector up there, which is just kind of a continuous sound. So Doug did mention that this is a fan that runs 24 hours a day, so it will have that...
I don't think that was the one that worried. It was the kicking that came occasionally.
Of the generator? Yeah, so that will happen once a week for 20 minutes. There's no doubt, and that is a different type of sound.
That frequency is what? That frequency is the best?
I'm not sure. I think it's in the report, but what we wanted to make sure that we showed the board was that we met the standard of the DBA limits.
Right.
So we hadn't pulled that out in the front, but that was just why we had proposed what we had proposed.
I've seen the sound studies, and I'm satisfied with what we've seen. The concern I have is one that was reflected by a lot of the residents that came and talked, and I don't know if we can address that here now, because we can only deal with what's in front of us from the applicant, is the colocation problem. If it did come to a point where there was two or three different facilities here, if all of a sudden, when the power went out, you had four generators all of a sudden popping off. I know that from Verizon's standpoint, is the decibel level is going to be what it is, but all of a sudden you throw a couple more into it, and I'm just wondering, as a board, if that's something that we're either going to just have to think about in the future, or if it's something we can address now. And I don't think we can address the colocation problem now, but it's something to consider in the future.
Yeah, we've, I think we've addressed colocation more conceptually than in fact, because we don't know indeed what the next provider will have in the way of equipment and technology and so forth. At the same time, though, I think that, and would ask Verizon to be cognizant of the fact that there may be others behind them, certainly by being first in line, you're best off because you're established. And I don't, maybe you're not the guy to ask, if you have two units, each propagating 40 decibels, together, they don't propagate 80, I'm sure.
They don't do 80, but there is an additional amount.
Forty-plus something. So if you guys are coming in just inside the noise requirements, good for you. You're in good shape, but that doesn't do a whole lot for the town of Cape Elizabeth, who may need other antenna providers setting up shop to provide coverage in the town.
That's absolutely correct.
I was a little disappointed that you did not come back with something a little more creative on the stockade fence enclosure to further dampen the sound that's being produced there.
No, I do appreciate that. I think that, I think the way, the way this would work, you know, if we're right at the 45, I think we're, again, as I noted before, we're going to be well below 45, but if we do the testing and we show that we're at 38 or 40, AT&amp;T or another carrier wouldn't be able to put their equipment boxes right next to ours at 34, 39 feet, because that's going to go over. So they would have to locate their equipment someplace else on the site, and then they would have to do a calculation based on kind of, you know, where, how that would affect the closest property line. By moving this behind the tower, we get close to one of the property lines. We could move it on to the other side where we'd be very far from the property lines, and we wouldn't even be close, but we moved behind the tank to get away from the current one. So I think the way this would shake out is you have to make sure every time somebody comes on that the collective sound doesn't violate the sound standard, and whatever has to happen because of that would have to happen.
Well, one thing, too, is in, I appreciate when you guys did apply here for the workshop. You did kind of move things around, and I think you did that for the neighborhood. But as a leaseholder, when, if you have a situation where you get more tenants coming on, in essence, as a tenant using this tower, if all of a sudden you get more people using, creating more sound, all of a sudden the land order may be in violation of the sound ordinance, and then the code enforcement may have to come shut down everybody.
Yeah.
So the more sound buffer that you can provide at the ground level might be better off for you in the future if there are other applications coming down the road for cell towers. It's just food for thought, because you don't want to be in a situation where all of a sudden the whole place is humming and the whole neighborhood's complaining, and the code enforcement goes with the sound meter and says, oh, yeah, Portland Water District's in violation because they have this property that's emanating this sound that's over the decibel.
Yeah, and again, I think we just did it because we had a very clear standard to comply with, and we wanted to make sure we did that. I appreciate that. In the future, I mean, this is somewhat speculative. I mean, AT&amp;T hasn't shown up to go through this process, even though the decision we got from the court clears the way for this water tank to be used for their installation as well. This is not a terribly high site at 80 feet, so even though it's on a bit of a hill, you're not going to be able to put that many carriers underneath. And I appreciate that, right now, everything that I'm saying is complete speculation, because we don't know who's going to come in. But if you look at most sites with, you know, 150, 190-foot towers, those are the ones that you see four or five carriers on. When you get church steeples and buildings that are much closer to the ground, it's much harder to put multiple carriers on, because AT&amp;T is going to be even lower than us, and the next one is going to be so far down that it's very unlikely that it will work. So the prospect of multiple folks coming on is not only legally speculative, but it's going to be difficult to get too many on there. But I do appreciate that, as you review each one of these as they come in, you're going to have to make sure that the site complies with the standards. My guess is, at that point in time, you know, AT&amp;T or T-Mobile calls up, you know, the Water District and says, you know, can you get Verizon Wireless to do something or whatever, and maybe that works, and there's cooperation clauses and stuff. But I think this is something that it's, that you could address as someone actually shows up and wants to do something that may make more noise. But it's obvious why I'm suggesting that, so, but I think that's actually correct.
Elaine?
One of the people who made a comment tonight indicated, if I understood them correctly, that there is more advanced technology for some of that equipment than what you've chosen to use here in terms of the generator, battery storage, that could, right now, make it quieter. And it seems to me that since we are required by the statute to consider colocation, that we really should do all that we can to make this as quiet as practicable at the present time in anticipation of colocation, because the town has a policy in favor of colocation. So my question would be, and I don't know that we have an answer, are there ways that you can make your equipment quieter?
I can't say that we've looked...
Including the generator.
Exactly. I can't say that we've looked into the alternative technologies or know what the sound impacts would be from those. I guess all I would say is that what we need to do is we need to show you that we comply with your noise standard, and I think we've shown that. I don't think what's appropriate is to try to get it so that we're even lower, especially because of how low 45 is and how low the expected sound is. This fan is predicted to come in at the sound of sitting in the Cape Elizabeth library. So, and also, it's important to note that every doubling of distance, you knock another 6 dB A off the sound. So we're like 34 feet. When you go another 34 feet away, this 33 to 40 is going to drop below 30. This is already a very, very quiet installation, and we think that you're going to be able to add AT&amp;T with their equipment over here and maybe even another one without it going above the level, given how quiet these fans are. So I appreciate that there's this kind of desire to make it as quiet as possible, but we think it's really quiet now, and it meets your standard, and that certainly the planning board has flexibility in the future to impose whatever restrictions to make sure it stays that way.
What about your generator, though?
Well, the generator only will run on test mode during the day. The standard is 55, and with the fan and the generator running at full load, we are at 52, so we meet the town standard there.
Barely.
The benefit of the town standard is you actually have a numeric figure, so there's like a clear standard to meet. So we've just been shooting for that standard.
I guess it seems to me that in this kind of a location where anticipation of colocation is built into the statute, that we, too, need to anticipate additional noise, and I would ask you to take another look, particularly at the generator. I know there's a question about where an emergency generator even fits, but we all know how frequently power goes out in Cape Elizabeth. So I guess I would ask you to take another look at what you can do to make that generator quieter and any more buffering you can do to the other facility to make the whole thing quieter.
Yeah, and, you know, the way to do it is what the chairman flagged on the site walk, which is we add a fourth section of fence, and there's soundproofing that is installed in the bottom two-thirds of those fence panels all the way around. That will reduce, even when the generator is running at full load and the fan is running, well below the nighttime standard under all circumstances. And certainly, if you make the decision that because of the colocation or any other interpretation of your ordinance, that that is necessary for us to comply, we can certainly do that. Verizon Wireless doesn't, you know, say, hey, we don't want to put the fence in because we can't afford it. They can obviously afford it. The conversations that I have with the people that make these decisions, the question that's asked of me is, well, what is the standard in the ordinance? And when I tell them what the standard is, they say, well, does our expert think we meet the standard? And I say, yes, and then what I get back is, well, why doesn't that do it? Go talk to the planning board and see if that does it. And that's how I got here tonight. But you folks certainly have the authority to do whatever you think is necessary to comply with your standards, and you get to make that decision, and, you know, we will comply.
I detect a sense of the board that we feel that Verizon could do more to dampen the sound of this operation than just getting in under the wire of the, granted that you did do that, but looking at the bigger picture, that might be a worthwhile thing to take back to your client.
And I think if you made that a condition of approval, then I would go explain to the powers that be that this is a condition of approval, and everyone would say, okay, well then we'll put the fence in. So I don't know that I'll be able to go back to them and get them to say anything other than, well, go back again and tell them that you meet the standard. But if you want to make that as a condition of approval, I am personally comfortable that that will fly.
I guess a question. What happens if you, we okay it, and you exceed the noise level when we come to test it?
Then we have to do everything that Ben McDougall says we have to do to comply with the ordinance, and this...
So you wouldn't start using it until you make that standard?
We would have to put a bigger muffler on. We would have to put a structure around. I mean, I don't think that there's any chance with the additional fencing.
Oh, no, I'm just...
But if it happened, and that goes to a bigger point, that a couple, a good point that was made, which is what happens if we are in violation of any aspect of your approval? Obviously, you all know what happens. You get a notice of violation if you don't cure it. You know, the town takes you to court under Rule 80K, and you have to pay the town's fees, and there's a whole enforcement process in place, and obviously, we'd be subject to that. We're also fine with having a condition that we will do an actual test, regardless of whether you require the additional fencing or not, to confirm that, you know, we're actually at, you know, below 45 at night and below 55 during the day.
So you'll do that, assuming you've done all the work, you'll do a final test to make sure you're within the sound levels?
Exactly. I mean, we expect, because of this 12 dB A kind of buffer that the expert put on it, that we're not going to come anywhere near the 45, but because of that, we have no problem doing a test, submitting those results, and showing you that, you know, at that output.
Just one final question. How, where would you put the meter recording? I mean, right up the site or where the housing is, because, sorry?
At the property line.
Right on the closest property line.
Okay.
The sound expert's initial report showed the sound at the closest resonance, but that's hundreds of feet away, and the decibel levels, even with the generator running, are going to be very, very low, especially given the location on the far side of the tank. But what I told them was, the planning board doesn't care about what it is at the house. You need to show them at the property line. So we would do the test right at the property line.
Anything more on noise? Everybody outside? Colocation, I think we have pretty much covered. Any further thoughts on colocation? Does people like to express questions? Does people like to express questions? Okay, now I think we're getting into the stuff that's a little quicker and easier to get rid of. At the site walk, you'll recall Scott, there was kind of a, you know, you're going to put in-
Driveway.
The arborvities and there's kind of a big messy area in front and there was some discussion of landscape timbers or something creating the driveway access into the-
Yes.
-site and then maybe raiding the rest of it for parking or something. And nothing in that nature showed up. You know if your client has a-
Can I?
Joe, actually, you're the-
Yeah, I actually wanted to address that in some detail because that's one of the things I noticed. There's a lot of attention paid to the top of the tower, but to me, the most glaring problem is actually what's going on at the bottom of the tower and that large opening in the road where you just see the whole base of the tower and all the equipment around it. Thank you. So, we have this buffering standard. Let me just grab it here real quick. So, I think the buffering standard here is really meant to obscure the base of the tower and make the whole property in which an antenna resides as inconspicuous as possible. And it's fairly detailed and-
Well, there's a little button, I think on the, yeah, up near the gray area.
Okay. So, there's our tower, our property line, and the gate. And right now, you see this line and this line. Actually, this whole area is open so that when you walk down the road here, you just have an unmitigated view of this entire tower. And the buffering standard calls for, it's actually layered, calls for something within the 15-foot zone, the 20-foot zone, and the 25-foot zone. And the whole point of that is to give you a foreground, mid-ground, and background, which controls your view and creates interest at ground level, right? And so, what I would really like to see in this site is a buffer in here that blocks your view of this tower as you walk down the road and a very strong definition of the gravel driveway and a respect of the buffering guideline. So, here's the 15-foot line. So, I would expect stuff in here and then in this next zone in here. And then, the next step in the buffer is the 40-foot mark, right? But obviously, you'd be in back of the fence and my thought was that you could pull all that in front of the fence as well. And I think if you can really create a dense vegetation, vegetational buffer in here, that's going to go a long way to just making this visually a lot more acceptable.
So, what I had asked, and Maureen and I talked about this, so I tried to get the engineers to do something. Let me just see if I can. Where are you? All right, so what, can I borrow the-
Yeah.
So, I'll just tell you what we had. So, what I talked to the engineers about was, we have, let me just show you this one picture. Chip had sent me a picture of the parking area. So, this is when, you know, it's not four below zero like the other day. And so, there's actually quite a bit of grass that kind of delineates the size of the parking area that's shown on the plan. So, based on kind of the fact that there was grass on either side, that's how the engineers went and identified the, where the existing driveway area was. So, what we're, what we, I asked them to do and what we would propose is to put, there's kind of two things, right? How do we better delineate this parking area for access issues and then what kind of buffering is necessary?
Wait, you're not parking though outside the gate, right? You're parking in the gate?
No, we would be parking outside the gate and then the technician would just be walking through. I mean, for construction, we'll need to get access in, but regular access into the site is just off Avon Road, parking in the parking area, and then the technician would walk in through the gate to access the site. So, the Portland Water District kind of treats this as a parking area. What we were proposing was to run a split rail fence along this line, which is the difference between where there's grass and where you just have the gravel, to kind of delineate where the parking area was and make it both a little more, I guess aesthetically pleasing, but also say, "Here's where the parking is and here's where the parking isn't." And then, we were proposing to put some additional vegetation along this line right here to provide some additional buffering between the tower and the parking area. I saw the one that you had proposed, which I think, you know, maybe that's one the board goes with and it gets us most of the way there. My concern was losing this area here of parking for vehicles in the event that Verizon is out there at the same time that the Water District is out there and to not treat this as much as a driveway, but as the parking area that both the owner of the property and Verizon would be using to park cars when we access the site. But to try to still do something to delineate the edge of that parking area. So, that was the one proposal that we had.
Let me just ask Maureen, is there a parking requirement of any sort? I mean, this is-
We haven't applied a specific number of parking spaces that they need to, they're required to provide. I don't think that, I can look it up, but typically, when there isn't a specific use listed, then the board can require the parking that is needed based on information from the applicant. The applicant stated there's, you know, one technician that comes, so it's probably reasonable to assume they need one parking space. So, I mean, the ordinance does have very clear dimensional requirements that you could narrow the 48-foot throat down to 24 feet wide and then show a 9-by-18 parking space. And still, my sense is you can get a long ways toward what Mr. Shalat has recommended in terms of adding some vegetation. And I would point out that, you know, this is something you can look at in terms of access management, in terms of vehicular access from the property, which is the site plan standard-
Yes.
-as well as, Mr. Anderson and I have had conversations about which standards apply and I have advocated that there are site plan standards that clearly apply that would make it appropriate for the planning board to pursue this if you wanted to.
And we appreciate that the access management, I guess, the reason why we hadn't proposed altering the existing parking area was because the current access by the Water District is relatively limited because the tank isn't full of water and we're only anticipating a single vehicle trip a month. So, our thought was that you didn't have issues about vehicles accessing the site, but I appreciate, as Maureen has noted, that you may have a different view and decide that something needs to happen, but that's why we hadn't proposed any change. The other issue about the buffering in this was why we didn't propose any buffering along here, other than what we did along the fence, was a question of whether, under the wireless standards, the water tank is a tower. When I had talked to Chip about this initially, I said, "Chip, the buffering standards in the wireless ordinance apply to towers, not alternative tower structures." And the example that he and I talked about was, if this was a church, it would be an alternative tower structure and we wouldn't be talking about, you know, the specific buffering requirements to make sure you didn't see the base of the church from the road. This is where Maureen and I may not agree on the interpretation and ultimately, you folks have to make it, but that's why we didn't do anything. This was just kind of, that we did, even though it wasn't required, to put the additional shrubs because my reading of that was that that buffering requirement only applies when you have a new tower. I appreciate you may make a different decision on that score.
I think Joe brings up a good point and it would be something that I would support seeing. Also, one of the issues that this site has is that if you have such an open driveway, it might encourage more people to come and possibly interfere with the tower. If you limited the access by basically putting up what you described as a fence or more shrubs, it would limit the capabilities of people who may or may not want to go down to that sort of area that there aren't many people around and congregate. So, I think that would be, it would be beneficial for the property to, for security reasons, so nobody's going and messing with the tower or the water tower in general. So, I would support what Joe's suggesting.
I mean, one option would be to use this plan for us to do the split rail fencing along the perimeter that he had identified on the plan, which isn't that far off the existing lines that we had proposed. And then to have some sort of buffering, some sort of vegetation in here, I would just respectfully request that we have, be subject to something that isn't quite as onerous as the ones that clearly apply to towers, that some amount of buffering, I think, would work here. This is all heavily vegetated. This is the end of Avon Road, so we're kind of at the dead end of Avon Road and there's not going to be a lot of traffic of people even coming down here. And so, we're just trying to figure out, you know, how to do some buffering there that is reasonable without overly restricting use of the parking area. But again, that's your call.
I'll just share with the board.
Mr. Anderson and I exchanged an emails on this and I don't think you have to go to the buffering standard that applies to tower and antenna structures. I think you can go to the buffering standard under site plan review and I don't think anyone is disagreeing that this is subject to site plan review. I just encouraged Mr. Anderson that I believe that with a little bit of assistance from a landscape architect, a professional who knows how to define a driveway, add some buffering, I don't think this would be a terribly expensive effort for the applicant. You might not even have to get into split rail fencing. You may want to be careful about putting in fencing because it may get in the way when you're trying to plow snow. I would just encourage getting a little bit of assistance from a landscape architect.
Yeah, I definitely second what Maureen said. I mean, that's not meant to be a design. It's just a concept and I would definitely have a landscape architect flesh it out and come up with something.
Okay.
Fair to how you look at it and get back with it? Okay, fence height, we have taken care of here. Want to assure that the undertaking is to have eight feet vertical from grade is throughout the fencing.
I think, where are we going to weigh in on whether we care if it's like 7.6 or 7.3 in places?
I think also, one of the purposes, if it's for security concerns, there's no requirement that the eight-foot fence have barbed wire at the top, whereas right now, either there's dispute on whether it's six feet or seven-two, has barbed wire on it. So, I would think that a fence that is the height that it is now with barbed wire would be more prone to keep people out as opposed to an eight-foot fence with no barbed wire.
It might indeed and I thought we were deciding if, because the referral from the code enforcement officer has put us into Section 19812, which is the, normally, you know, just applies to tower districts and it has an eight-foot requirement, were we going to say that doesn't really apply or?
Well, I'll leave that to her. I just, that's just my concern. I mean, we can move on from it.
I agree, a barbed wire topping is probably more important than the exact height of the fence.
Yeah, I mean, this will go to that same issue on some level as the buffering. I mean, again, if this, because this is an alternative tower structure, if this was a church, we wouldn't be putting an eight-foot fence around the church even though theoretically people could climb. So, the Water District has obligations under Homeland Security to surround their tank with a tent, with a fence. We had done the estimate on the height, not thinking that that fence was necessary here because even though this is a water tower, it was an alternative tower structure and that the security is really the issue of the water utility and its obligations. You know, the ladder on the side is part of the tank and so, we had put the eight-foot fencing around the equipment that we were adding to make sure that that was secure. But setting aside the annoying legal ramblings of me, you know, we're totally willing to make this fence eight-foot high. We would just like to have the discretion of either, you know, extending it because these things are bent and they can be readjusted and it will be eight feet and whether there's barbed wire or not, we'll make sure that this is eight feet all the way around if that works for the board.
I agree.
I was just going to weigh in that I'd like to see the fence be eight feet all the way around. Old, new, you know, adjusted or brand new, doesn't matter, just eight feet.
Okay, and that's fine, a condition of approval. I already talked to Chip about that. We're totally comfortable with that.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Elaine.
If I understand what you're saying as you've been talking through these standards, you're saying we don't really have a tower and therefore, we really don't have to comply with all the standards here in 19812. But I actually don't think that's what our ordinance says and so, I'm inclined to adhere to them pretty strictly. If you had a completely obscured antenna, we wouldn't be here at all, as you said. But if we're here, this section applies and it doesn't say anything about alternative tower structures as distinguished from towers.
Yes, I totally appreciate that.
So, I note your argument and I think it's incorrect.
Yeah, and that's totally-
We follow our standards and we need to stick to them.
I mean, I was mostly just trying to explain why, when we proposed the site, that we didn't include things that were triggered by those, including the specific buffering requirement. But I appreciate that you're going to make that decision and interpret it the way you're comfortable with and, you know, we will go along with that and comply with whatever requirements come of that.
Well, since you're not completely obscured, our ordinance tells us that we apply these standards-
Yes.
-whether you're a tower or an alternate tower structure, that for these purposes, these standards apply. So, I think that's what we need to do, which I guess is what Maureen has been saying.
Yes. Maureen won the argument.
She just needed you to do it.
Okay. The last thing I have on my list is the performance guarantee, which we normally would require and we will require here.
Yeah, normally, we would do an estimate of the removal costs of everything, submit that to Ben for his review. I'm assuming you'd send it to you and then it goes to the, maybe the third-party town engineer or?
Just, yeah, just saying, skip the details.
Okay, good. Yes, we will do that and we will give you whatever form of guarantee you need as part of that process.
And there was mention made by somebody that that would include the cost in the case of abandonment of the site, the removal of the equipment?
Yes, yes, so the antennas, the equipment, the fencing, the things that we are adding as part of the project. It's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 or $20,000, mostly because there's no tower to take down.
Okay.
Peter, can I ask clarification on one other thing that's been mentioned tonight and I've seen in some of the materials? Can you clarify the question that's been raised about the misdeprecation on your plans of the location of a water tower antenna? If in fact, it's not depicted properly, is there some reason you don't just correct that?
Yes, and if I could pull up the other version that I just had the engineer send me today, I could show you, that we did in the side view, we moved the antennas to the right, which is where the photo simulation shows them. I think if you see-
Are there still some plan sheets where it has not been corrected?
Well, no, we will submit a new set of plan sheets that has the correction. We've also noted that the height and the location of these antennas are just estimated because that's part of the existing condition. We're not altering them. We're not, there's nothing about this project that will affect those existing antennas. They're going to remain right where they are. So, you know, we apologize for any confusion on the plans, but we've corrected the plan to show what we think is the correct location, but there's a note on there that says that these are just an approximate only because we haven't gone out, you know, with a tape measure to actually measure exactly where the antennas are and translated that over just because it's not part of this project.
And what about the height?
Same with the height, whatever they are at is what they're at. We're not altering the height or the size of these antennas, so we haven't gone out to confirm the exact height. What we've done, was done based on the GPS, which we believe is accurate, but I think the issue is somewhat of a distraction because it's- the issue is somewhat of a distraction because it's not part of our proposal, it's just part of the existing conditions of the site, and we're not doing anything to alter those.
Nonetheless, if you're showing it on the plan, it should be correct.
Yes, so we've done it as correct as we, we can, but we do have a note on the plan that says that this is an approximate, so if we're off by a couple of inches, you know, it's possible that we are off by a couple of inches, but we're, we don't think that's relevant to what you're reviewing, and that's, you know, compliance with the standards for what we proposed.
So the plan that was referred to earlier has now been corrected? Is that right, Maureen?
Well, it has, I will, I will, I've got copies here that show the revision. I was trying to figure out where we were tonight about additional submissions, but we'll make that additional submission to make that correction.
You know, whenever applicants offer to make changes to plans after you've received them, I usually discourage them from bringing them and redistributing them. So usually, we see those corrections in the next submission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have reached some semblance of agreement on a lot of items, and there are a few items which you will be getting back to us on.
Yeah, so what, let me make sure I have that.
Yeah, right, that's, the, I'm going to suggest to the board that we are not in a position to finalize an approval tonight, and that we should lay this off until the next meeting, at which point, with the input from you folks, we would hope to finalize our decision. Any reaction from the board on that point?
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Okay. So we will, in the next few minutes, I think, try to make the list of what we'd like to see from you guys.
Okay. The big item that I have is this plan, taking Joseph's plan, and, and I guess it would be helpful to get some guidance from the board that the, the kind of general area that's been designated as the defined driveway or our parking area, that the board is kind of comfortable with that kind of general area as opposed to us using the entirety. And then what we can do is come back with a planting plan in that kind of elbow for your consideration, but if members of the board had different thoughts about kind of the big picture of, no, it should be narrow, it should be wider, there should be a turnout, that would be helpful just to get some feedback, because we can take this and move it to the next stage and make it more formal if folks are generally comfortable with that concept plan. Maureen?
With the board, with respect to the board, I would really encourage the applicant to avail himself of professional services.
Yeah, we don't want to deny it.
No, and, and, you know, I think, I think a landscape architect could come in here with a concept, and it might be totally different from this, and still be very acceptable to the planning board.
Okay. Good feedback, got it. All right, so that's at the top of my list, so that's definitely the number one. We will give you the revised plan that shows the corrected location of the antennas with the accompanying note. So that's my number two.
One, one suggestion I would also, or I'd like to see is, one of the, sort of the competing aspects that we have in this is that we have a large aspect of the town that's hoping that this passes because they want cell phone coverage in their neighborhood. So I would like to see that RF report that's going to tell us what areas would be covered by this antenna going in, just so we have that information going forward when it comes to possible approval.
Okay. I mean, I can get that, I will, probably, because I've made a number of annoying lawyer comments tonight, will flag that. I'm not sure that's relevant to any of your performance standards, but a bunch of what we're doing here, we're trying to be responsive to questions, so I will get that information and get it to the board so that you have.
Thanks.
On the topic of lead paint, and I may be totally misremembering this, I believe that we decided that we would have a condition of approval that will basically require the applicant to work with the water company and the DEP to do what the DEP requires, and to assure that the representations on painting are completed before they start installation. And then, and then paint the, once the installation is there, to paint the shrouding and.
The, a condition of approval that they will not begin work on the site until the tower is painted and lead remediation is taken care of.
And I think you were going to require us to get something in writing from the DEP to that effect.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I had that note too, remember.
I was keen to see an agreement that would bring the water company in on this, and I'm not sure my colleagues on the board share my view.
Would it be great to see the Portland Water District stand up and say something? But I don't think we can make a condition of approval that they have to come and say something.
Well, I'm not sure it's the case. I'm not sure why that would be. I mean, we have no privy to contract with the Portland Water District. If they say, we're not going to do it, you know, we're not going to do it for six months, and you, the wait is right now, you guys will be stopped, you won't be able to go forward. But I mean, it's true, why the, why the Portland Water Company, which is in this game of leasing this big steel cylinder for antenna mountings, I don't see why they shouldn't be in a, in the contractual relationship with the town.
Well, I think, I think the, the way you get there, you can get there, but it's to impose upon the applicant that's before you the obligation to do whatever it is, as opposed to someone that isn't before you as an applicant. And I, I have no doubt that the water district is going to do this, we're going to hold them to it, this is part of the plan. We are certainly not going to wait around eight months while they hem and haw. We're going to tell them that they have a contractual obligation to paint it, and we don't think they're, they're going to hesitate for a second. They want it painted, and we're going to pay for it, so it's all working out. So I think, I mean, I think what you can do is to put a condition where we can't stall our equipment until the tank is painted, and, and then that gives us the incentive to make sure it happens, and we've got a contract that says they have to do it, so we'll exercise our rights under that contract, and we can't proceed until it's painted.
Who does the finished painting on the shrouding and the, the masking of the, of the wire?
That, that will be matched, so those will, those won't be painted, those will be matched to match the color of the painted tank. When they come on site, they are the color of the painted tank. You take a sample of the paint chip and you send it, and they match it. So the, the cable housing and the shrouds will be, will come on as a solid, you know, impregnated color onsite.
So that'll be your, your, not the water company.
Yes, that's right.
I'll, I'll back off.
Maureen, can I ask you a question on that? So Portland Water District is the landowner here. We need to have as our applicant, somebody who has all of the necessary right title and interest to do the project. In this case, we have a leaseholder, but the leaseholder can't complete all of our requirements without action by the landowner. Can we require that the landowner become a co-applicant if we're requiring action by the landowner to meet our requirements?
I, I don't think we have to, because, I mean, the right title, the right title or interest standard, and believe me, I could hear you even when you weren't here on that one, the applicant has obtained permission from the owner to pursue this approval. And I think you can easily get what you want without trying to force a recalcitrant quasi municipal entity to become a reluctant co-applicant. And I think you would put a lot of energy with not necessarily any meaningful benefit. So the, the applicant has a meaningful relationship with the water district. They both have money in the game. So if we hold the applicant to the standard, there's enough incentive without us having to, to use the muscle to make sure those things happen. And I, I think the applicant, the board made clear last month that they wanted to make sure that all of this painting and lead remediation was going to happen, and the applicant added a note to the plan, and I just think we probably need to beef up that note.
And I guess my concern is, we haven't seen, unless it's all in your lease, and I'm not sure how much of that we have.
It is in the lease.
Any, anything in writing with respect to the DEP requirements. I heard somebody talk about that the painting is required as part of lead remediation to prevent further leaching.
Yeah, no, I mean, the.
The painting is supposed to prevent further leaching. Is that part of what the DEP requires? Isn't it part of what the DEP requires?
It is, it is, and there, we have a letter that I think all of you have now, and there's some, there's some questions that are asked, and the DEP has said that if there was remediation done of the soil, that, that there would have to be more testing after the tank was painted, so I think we just need to get that, I mean, the DEP has a lot more authority than the town has, and a lot more expertise when it comes to lead remediation. So the fact that they're already at the table is, in my opinion, a huge step forward. So all we need to do is make sure that what the DEP is required is tied to this applicant. And, and as long as that note is strong enough, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for us to say, you can't go further because, until you prove to us the DEP is satisfied.
But do we have enough in our record showing that the water district has agreed to do what the DEP says is required to be done?
Well, they don't, this is, that's the nice thing about the DEP, you don't really have to agree. They tell you, and there's not really a lot of opportunity to disagree with that.
A bit short of a.
They party to, and is, is the water district party to things that are?
No, there, and, and again, I mean, this is a letter that was submitted to us, and it's dated January 7th, 2015. It is from the Department of Environmental Protection. It's addressed to Roger Perdis, the administrative facilities chief operator of the Portland Water District. And it demonstrates that the water district and the DEP are in communication with each other and seem to be working cooperatively to remediate the lead. Dear Mr. Perdis, I'm sending this letter in response to your December 23rd, 2014 email requests for department approval of your plans for A, cleaning and painting the Avon Road water tank, and B, remediating lead contamination in the soil surrounding the tank. So this is a letter from the DEP confirming that the water district has plans to paint the tank and remediate the, the lead. They, the, not the DEP, the, the water district has paid for Northeast Test Consultants to do a report that has assessed the lead, and then they're just talking about what are the specific steps in what order they need to do. So I think this letter shows a great deal of cooperation between the DEP and the water district to move ahead with what could be a very bad situation if they don't clean it up.
So could we beef up this note here?
Yes, we should beef up the note.
Where it says that Verizon will comply with any applicable requirements of the DEP, because I'm not sure those are requirements that the DEP has for Verizon. Those are requirements the DEP has for the water district. So I'm wondering whether we need to say in this note that Verizon will comply with any DEP requirements applicable to the site, because the implication here, one could say, well, this is not my obligation, so I don't have to do it. This is the water district's.
Agreed.
So I'm wondering if.
Our intent is to comply with anything that the DEP requires at this site.
The idea is that we're telling the applicant.
But actually, your intent is not to do it unless the water district doesn't do it.
No, no, I mean, if.
The water district to do it.
I mean, if the DP says after this is all repainted that, all right, when anybody else comes on to the property, you've retested, that you, Portland Water District, have got to do a test after the installation of any new equipment? If that becomes a condition, then we have a condition, a statement on the plan that says, we will comply with anything that is required by the DEP. It could apply at the site. I mean, if, if the Portland Water District spills oil on the other side of the shed, we're not going to be subject to that because it won't have anything to do with the tank and the lead remediation, but anything that had to do with this tank repainting and the soil remediation, we're comfortable with whatever broader language that would make us subject to any requirement, because you're right, Verizon Wireless is not going to be subject to an order of the DEP.
Right.
So it shouldn't say, you know, any requirement for us, it should be more general, any requirement that applies to the water district, or this site, or the tank, or whatever broader language you think you're more comfortable with, we're fine with that.
I mean, we, we could do something that doesn't assign responsibility for who has to do it, it just has to say that the applicant is not going to be allowed to install equipment and run things until there's been confirmation from the DEP that everything's been remediated.
And either we'll do it, or we'll make them do it.
Would that not best be a condition in the approval rather than a note on the plan?
I think notes on the plan are wonderful things, and you can make it a condition as well.
I think it should be both.
Yeah, we can definitely do both.
Caroline, you said earlier, and I think I was agreeing with you, that the, beyond what the DEP might or might not require, just the basic fact of painting and ongoing maintenance should be, should be undertaken, and I.
And I don't know how to address that.
If you don't want to get the water company in this document to be responsible for it, I think you guys ought to be standing up for it, then you can make your arrangements with the water company.
Yeah, I mean, I respectfully, I don't really think that long-term ongoing maintenance and repainting and O and M of the tank is really necessary or appropriate as a condition of approval. I think that, I mean, if you, you authorize a Dunkin' Donuts to go in and they don't take care of the painting on their sign or something, that's, you know, that's kind of an issue about their operation of the site. I think that the intention of the Portland Water District is to maintain this site and that it will be painted in a way that the paint will be good for 30 or 35 years or whatever, you know, they think that, you know, if you paint your house, it's good for. I think that, you know, having some sort of condition to keep repainting it is not appropriate because the repainting of the tank is not part of, we're just, we're showing folks that we're doing it, we're doing it because we think it will make it look better, but we don't think it's part of compliance with the site plan review standards or the wireless standards, and as an ongoing matter, I don't know that that's really something that is part of your review. To the extent we think about this as, well, we got to make sure that this lead paint issue doesn't come up again, that continues to be the DEP's responsibility. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that what the water district is doing is not actually required by any state law, having, there is no DEP lead soils in, you know, lead, lead levels in soils unless you're closing a hazardous waste facility, which this obviously isn't. The water district is doing this because they're a public utility, and they're trying to be responsive to the requests of the neighbors, but this is a voluntary action by the water district to do this, and I don't, I'm not expecting that the DP is going to have an ongoing requirement to keep repainting the tank because the soil remediation will be complete and will be final and permanent and done. But again, that's just another one of my opinions that I appreciate you're going to critically evaluate and make your own independent assessment.
Well, Maureen, you're going to take your hand in the note.
Yes, well, I will work with the applicant to beef up the note and also bring forward a proposed condition for the board to consider.
All righty. That's all taken care of. I think we decided the, I'm sorry.
Noise was next?
Hmm?
Noise was the next.
Yes, noise, right.
Yeah, is there any additional documents on noise, or, or?
There's a condition for a test.
A condition of the test, and I guess the question is, are, are you going to, I would recommend that when you get to your final decision, if you conclude at that point in time that the additional section of fencing and soundproofing is required, that you make that a condition of approval as opposed to us going back and adding that to the plan. I think it gets you to the same place you need to be in the end, and that presumes you're going to make that determination. I'm still going to get up at the next meeting and argue why that you don't have to do it, but I appreciate you may reject my position.
I'll take that one on.
Okay.
So why, why wouldn't, if they know we're going to make it a condition of approval, why wouldn't they do it?
You have an engineer who can say, okay, we hear you, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, which will reduce the, the sound by X number of decibels. Isn't this something you guys ought to step up and volunteer to do?
Yeah, I mean.
Here are the engineers.
Yeah, the, the problem from my end is that we don't need to add all of this to comply with the standard based on the modeling, but, and there's also a benefit to me if conditions of approval that require site changes come in as conditions of approval because our lease with the Portland Water District requires them to kind of accommodate any conditions of approval imposed by the permitting authority as opposed to going back and adding things. But you know what, this, as I'm thinking of this, you know, it probably doesn't matter if.
We'll add it to the conditions of approval, but, I mean.
But if, at this point in time, you're all sitting there and you're all in agreement that this change needs to, to happen, as I'm thinking about this, we can do it that way too, and I can add it to the plan, so whatever.
I think it's a sense of the board, and you, be careful what you wish for, because if we have to come up with a language to comply with, it might be a lot easier if you were proposing the engineering tests that would meet our. if you were proposing the engineering specs that would meet our goal.
Yeah, I will use what would have been put on if we had done this in the first instance. And the sound engineer knows exactly what the specs are and the height of this foam stuff or whatever it is, and we will add that to the plan.
Okay.
I apologize for that diversion down that procedural road.
Colocation, I think we have a note and we've pretty much decided there's not a whole lot else we can do prospectively in colocation, right?
I have a question again. It may just be about the wording. So your note says that Verizon Wireless will comply with all requirements of the FCC. Our statute requires something a little different. And it says that you will essentially help to facilitate colocation. Our statutory requirement is not tied into or limited to what the FCC requires.
Yeah, and I think the text-
Your note seems to be limited to the FCC requirement, not keyed into what our statute requires, and I'm wondering why.
Could I, perhaps we could just, we'll refine the note.
Yeah. I mean, we had talked about the language and I think it says compliance with the FCC and otherwise will not take any action, but whatever, I think our intent is the same-
No, it says such requirements, referring back to the FCC.
Okay, and our intent was to make it clear that we're not going to interfere. We'll do whatever is required by the ordinance. That was the intent and we can modify that language as necessary.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, you were about her in the fence. Yeah, the buffer in the fence, and I think he's got that, you've got that on your list, right Scott?
Yep. So I've got the, to do the mockup of the access and the driveway and that, I have, well, we'll give you the new site plan that shows where the antennas have been located, RF report on the coverage from the site, the fence and the soundproofing added to the plan, working on both the colocation note and the DEP note with Maureen. That's what I have. Great.
That cover the waterfront? Okay, well then, I think what we would do, if this is, if we're done with this matter, would be to move to table it to the next April meeting and we have a vote on that one?
You can just take the, if there's someone who's like to make the motion, you could take the motion for approval and just slightly adjust it into a tabling motion.
Are you ready?
Detabled, detabled to the, is that, is that where you just added at the end?
Yeah, you just detabled to the regular April 25th, 2016.
Okay. All right. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted, just the whole thing, right?
Yep.
And facts presented, the application of the Verizon Wireless is requesting site plan review to install wireless antennas on the existing water tower located 11 Avon Road and to construct a 10 by 16 concrete pad at the base of the tower to support equipment cabinets and a generator. Detabled until the regularly scheduled April 25th meeting, 2016.
Anybody have a second for that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the seconded motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously?
Great, thanks everyone. All right, so I'll work with Maureen on timing and submissions and we have it to be here back on the 25th of April.
Great, well, thank you to the applicant.
Thanks very much.
Thank you to the citizens who came and sat through a long evening. We appreciate it.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Yes, we are just coming up in 10 o'clock.
It's two minutes to 10. If you just keep going, we're all right.
Okay. Keep rolling.
The, excuse me, the folks who are leaving now, would you please sort of try to leave quickly and go outside because we won't be able to hear the next, here.
I'm in main hearing now.
Mr. Chairman, I have to relieve my wife of a one-month-old right now, so I have to go.
We still have a forum.
Wait.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, to continue passing, taking up a new item after that one?
Yeah, a motion to suspend the rules, take up a new motion at this time of the day. Anybody in?
Quickly. Second?
Yeah, all in favor?
Are we continuing?
Yes, we are.
No.
Do we have a second for Henry's motion?
No name, this is, yep.
What?
Suspend the rules.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
I couldn't hear you with all this. I never heard.
Okay, the motion was to suspend the rules to permit taking of a new application after 10 p.m. Motion made, seconded, passed.
At this time, yes.
Alrighty. Okay, we want.
Where's, we're missing somebody? No, we're missing somebody.
You caught that, Jonathan had to leave? Yeah. Okay, we'll go to item three on the agenda. And first of all, I want to thank the applicants on this item and the people from town who spent more time here than they probably wanted to waiting for their turn. This item is the Cape Car pratican acupuncture, three-lot minor subdivision and two mixed-use building site plan. Two Penguin Properties LLC are, excuse me, requesting minor subdivision review of three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multifamily residential units, and a 357 square foot building connector located at 12 Hillway. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 1623 Minor Subdivision Review and section 199 Site Plan Review and section 1964 Town Center Design Standards. We'll run this meeting as follows. Excuse me. The review will begin by, with a project presentation by the applicant. We'll then be considering the issue of completeness. So for the members of the public information, the hearing tonight is only on completeness. That is, have the applicants submitted the information that they have to, necessary for this board to make a determination on the merits of the application. The merits of the application will not be considered tonight. The submission requirements are laid out in the ordinance and then there's sort of a larger view, is there, are there things we should know about that we want to have before us when we take up at the next meeting the actual application on the merits? So the public comment, which will be permitted, should be focused only on the completeness issues and not on the merits of the application. In other words, do you think it's a good idea and should be approved or a bad idea and should not be approved or what have you? If the information, if the application is considered incomplete, we'll specify what information is needed to make it complete and there will be no substantive discussion on the application. If the application is deemed complete, that is as far as we will get tonight. We will not go into the merits. We'll also talk about a site viewing at which the public is free to attend at the, so that's basically where we're going tonight. Okay, can we hear from the applicant about your project?
All right, I'm just, I'm introducing everybody. My name is Amber Marowitz and my husband is Dr. Zev Marowitz. We are the ones proposing the development of the Hillway property. We love this town and we believe that the last five years have really cemented our place here. I find it important for everyone here to know that we plan to not only practice at this location, but will live at this location. This we hope to be our place of work and most importantly, our home. With that being said, we care so much about every inch of this property and to propose this development, I would like to introduce the WBRC team. We have Rob Frank, who is an engineer and the director of Civic and Commercial Studio. Next to him, we have John Kenny, who is our civil engineer. In the front, we have Jocelyn Booth, who is our architect, and Will Pogar, who is our architect and region director. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Robert Frank with WBRC. I'll provide a fairly cursory overview of the merits of the project. I'll turn it over to John to do a quick overview of the engineering pieces and then Jocelyn and Will will walk through the architecture compliance with the standards. So we hope to be, this is our, sort of a summary presentation. We hope it's to your liking as far as the speed. I'll start right in. The first image we have is that of, just to get your bearings, again, this is the perimeter of Cape Elizabeth and ironically, in about the center, geographic center, is the town center district where the project is located. We can see here, zooming in a little bit, that the project is really at the, it's an infill property right in the heart of the town center. And the property itself is here on Hillway. And the small carb out here, this, this is the existing, there's an existing farmhouse and this was a barn originally associated with that property. It's not part of the current parcel. There are really two things before you that we have submitted for your review and completeness. One is a land subdivision. Simply put, we're proposing to create three lots. The first lot, lot number one, 1.3 acres, is the lot that will be subject to the site plan review for the proposed mixed-use development. Lot two consists of the existing farmhouse, which is a two-unit residence that's about slightly under half an acre, 0.43 acres. And then lot three, currently undeveloped, currently no plans for any improvements or development on that parcel. The development, the development within lot one will consist of a mixed-use, project by mixed use. It's a 10-unit townhome, technically multifamily designation under your ordinance on the upper floors and then at the lower level, the ground level will be a medical office space. It's broken up into Building Footprint One at 3,789 square feet and Building Footprint Two is 2,416 square feet. A small connector that will provide access into the lower level medical office spaces is between the two buildings. When we met, we've met before you folks twice at two workshops. We've refined that original concept plan to break up the parking into, in accordance with the ordinance. We have basically broken these up into spaces that are separated by raised planted islands. The lower parking area will primarily serve the medical office space here. These upper two components of the parking will serve the housing component. Then over here, we have two dash areas that's sort of a dual use. They're also shared between the properties. It's our understanding that during the day, these may be shared for use by possibly the medical office use below or the employees, and then in the evening, that may be used for the residents. In either case, we propose the required number of parking for all uses simultaneously is 50. We've proposed 51 spaces. The gray areas you see here at the workshop, we talked quite a bit about Ocean House Road and a pedestrian connection. We show that now on this plan. That connects to the existing sidewalk shown in the dash line here. We also show a new sidewalk in Hillway as requested that parallels an existing sidewalk in the Hillway right away over here. We have connectivity to the Hillway sidewalk into the inner portion of the site. We also have connectivity to the perceived main entrances to Building Footprint Two and Building Footprint One as required in the town center ordinance. I think one of the main elements to remind folks, we've provided quite a bit of detail in Hillway. John may elaborate on that a little more. We're currently working with your Public Works Group. And the city engineer, it's our understanding that Hillway is under consideration for redesign and sort of rebuild. So what we're proposing is the magnitude of improvements that are proposed as part of our application. The exact location of where those will go will be done in conjunction with the town engineer, the town Public Works. So it may have some subtle changes, but basically the extent of what we're proposing tonight will be incorporated into that plan. The illustrative site plan provided by our landscape architect further reinforces the breaking up of the parking areas. You can see here, the raised islands really do provide separation between the two and a visual break as well as over here. Along Hillway, we have the required buffer plantings that are driven by the number of residential units. And on the next slide, I'll show, at the workshop, we had shown disruption, if you will, for grading and working it out. We've obviously had time now to really refine the grading and we're happy to bring this back before you with avoidance of disturbance in this area as well as up here and doing so preserving that vegetation along those corridors as can be seen here. We actually now have existing plantings here that extend here, also noting that this town-owned parcel here is also vegetated with quite a hefty, healthy remains of the trees along Hillway in this location, again, supplemented by the plantings in Hillway. This, as you'll see later on, provides sort of that opening, the feeling of an existing residential structure and the arrival of either a garden pathway or a former carriage path that we talked about. So the, this plan really illustrates the overall grading and I'll let John, actually, John Kenny, who provided the bulk of the engineering on this, come up and describe some of what we're proposing for stormwater utilities, et cetera. John?
Thank you, Rob. Good evening. My name is John Kenny, WBRC Architects Engineers. As Rob mentioned, I did some of the, some of the engineering for the project. This slide here shows the, well, I'd like to talk a little bit about the drainage of the site. Generally, the site drains from, this is the high point of the site, from Scott Dyer Road, down toward Catch Basin here at the intersection of Hillway and Ocean House Road. Hillway drains down to Catch Basin here and a lot of the site will drain down to a ditch that runs along Ocean House Road and a portion of Ocean House Road drains into this Catch Basin here. Following the development of this project, the drainage patterns will remain in the same general direction. The applicant is proposing to deal with stormwater runoff, an innovative approach using porous pavement. So you can see in all the blue areas here, this is all a porous asphalt pavement which is designed for stormwater to drain right through, infiltrate right through the pavement into a engineered subgrade, which contains a filter layer, a reservoir layer, and an underdrained structure. And the idea is that stormwater will generally infiltrate back into the groundwater after passing through that filter layer. Any excessive storms would be picked up by that underdrained layer, underdrainage system. Our model shows that even with a 25-year storm, that water is still infiltrating back into the groundwater and not running off the site. This stormwater approach both attenuates peak flow runoff and also the volume of water from the site draining downstream toward Willow Brook and out to the Spurwink River. So in addition to the peak flows, you get the treatment and also, you know, oftentimes in, on a large pavement surfaces, you also get that, in the summertime, you get that thermal impact of downstream, which is avoided in this situation. So a lot of the impervious area, part of the roof here drains out into this impervious structure, I mean pervious, I'm sorry, pervious structure. A portion strain will drain down and all end up back into the Catch Basin here and down Ocean House Road. into the Sketch Basin here and down Ocean House Road. There is a, we're working with, we got a review from your town engineer. He had a few comments. He suggested the incorporation of a rain garden, which is part of some of your, the drainage plan, I understand, that was done for Cape Elizabeth. And we were looking at incorporating a rain garden right in this location to further attenuate the peak flow runoff from the site. So that's, I think when we come back, we'll be incorporating that into the plan as well. That's not in your plan set at this point. This plan here shows some of the utilities. Water will be provided from Hillway. There's water line that runs along Hillway here, and it'll be coming up here into the utility room in building number one. We received a letter just today from the Portland Water District that I sent on. I believe that was forwarded on to you as well, in terms of adequacy of the water system. We will, we're currently showing one line in to the building, and we'll be changing that to show the two, the fire protection and domestic for the next set of plans that we submit. Sanitary will be, currently, for the farmhouse here, there's a subsurface wastewater system behind here that'll be taken out, and both the existing building and the proposed buildings will be tied into the municipal sanitary system. Be a pump station here, tied in here, and then a pump station over here, which will convey sanitary waste to the existing system on Scott Dyer Road. We had many conversations with the Public Works Director and your town engineer about whether this is the best solution, or the gravity system down here, and this is the preferred system. It's a newer, higher capacity system that will take care of the sanitary waste, so that's why we're tying into this one here. Electric service will come off Ocean House Road. There's a three-phase service available. Come onto the site, transformer's here, and we'll go underground to the utility room here. In green is the underdrain system for the porous pavement. You can see it's not all in green, otherwise it would have obscured the whole plan here, but it generally shows where these underdrains are located, in the parking area. And as Rob mentioned, the work in Hillway, we're showing currently, there's a ditch along Hillway, and to get the esplanade in and the street trees and everything, we designed this area and put a culvert in instead of the ditch in this area. We're meeting later this month, on the 30th, with the town engineer and public works director, to try to get a better handle on this design. Both projects will be, are scheduled to be constructed at the same time. So I think we can integrate both projects and get this to work. But at this point, we're showing our plans to meet all the standards on Hillway here, with the street trees and utilities and sidewalk and everything. I believe that's it for utilities. So, back to Rob.
And this plan was really just to, as simply as possible, to graphically summarize the project and its overall tie-in to the neighboring bulk width, length, width of other structures. I think you can see what we've done is we've superimposed the footprint one and two here. At the farmhouse, there's an adjacent residential here, church, Cumberland Farms, and again, some of the other structures. You can see that it really, within the town center, it isn't the smallest, it's not the largest. It really is sort of right in the midst of those, from a pure graphic sense. So the next piece is really talking about the building architecture. Jocelyn will come up and speak, and we even brought samples to share as requested.
Hi there. So as you can see from the previous slides and from the graphics we're about to show you, we've really designed each of these two buildings to represent a traditional coastal home. In order to better show the building design to you, we've hidden all of the trees and landscaping that would normally be in front of this building. So the design requirements clearly list a number of guidelines, such as roof pitch, height, and exterior materials, just to list a few. You can see from this presentation, as well as the full packet of submitted material, that we've looked at all these design criteria. We believe we've addressed them, and that the project is compatible with all of the requirements. One thing to note here is that due to the sloped nature of the site, two-thirds of the building is actually designed as a two-story building, and only one-third of the building is actually three stories tall. And in that portion, we've used a number of scale-reducing techniques, which I'll talk about in a minute.
So in the design standard, there's discussion about materials. I wanted to show you some of the anticipated materials that we are considering using. They are, they will be the language of a typical coastal aluminum architecture. We would suggest a shingle, a square plus shingle, with fibers exposure. We would, we are considering, and I want to advise you that there are two options. One would be, at preference, I think, would be a traditional wood shingle, prefinished. We're not sure price-wise which of these, if they would have the same appearance. They both would have woven corners, some of the traditional, again, the same exposure that you would find in any other coastal or neighborhood home. We are looking, as you can see, in the neutral color range, with a gray or green palette. We are, I think you can see here, some we're anticipating trim detailing, like a white laser. And another one that we suggest is that we are anchoring the building with stone base, which will tie into the site. So that will be a nice scale reduction element. The shingles are, we would find in any, a lot of residences in the town of Cape Elizabeth, they would be an architecturally very accomplished shingle roof. We're looking at a color, again, that's in a neutral palette. I think if we were to look at the perspective, you'll see that we are using, as mentioned before, dormers, steep gable roofs, pitches, traditional wood, traditional trim detailing on the outside. Let's see, the language of the windows, that you would find in traditional architecture, and columns and entry doors and all that, again, will meld with the intent, which is to fit into the town's Cape Elizabeth.
So, in addition to the exterior materials, you can see some of those scale-reducing techniques that Will was talking about. The dormers, the woven corners, accent bands, articulation of building surfaces. Also evident in this perspective is what we're hoping will be a nicely landscaped front entry to the buildings and front entry courtyards off of Hillway.
This is looking downhill way?
Yep. So this perspective is looking downhill way, kind of from the town center, looking towards the building. And these views, we have ghosted in some of the trees and landscaping to give you an impression of where those will be. You know, they're a little light here, so again, you can see the architecture of the building, but you can see those street trees along the new proposed sidewalk there.
And one thing I might mention, the lighting on your projector and on the gray wall, it's not really, the color isn't coming through as I would have anticipated. These are really re-sampled from your set, so they should be pretty much the same thing. What we can do, though, is I can leave an 11 by 17 that I think is really the true color that we would have anticipated on the wall, and there's a PDF now on your laptop, so those can be emailed around, if that's okay, or we can even send more copies. But I just noticed sitting back here that it's kind of dark, and it's not showing up that way on the laptop or on these. So maybe after, if there's questions on, it should be a lot easier to see when you get the PDFs. I apologize for the calibration, so.
Not to be outdone, but I'll donate my copy as well.
So shown here is the view from Ocean House Road. You can see, again, some of the traditional architectural detailing in the gables, the columns, the stone base that we talked about. The intent here is to provide the semblance of a garden pathway, providing access to Ocean House Road. An entry feature, such as a decorative fence and landscaping is planned for location, something along the lines of the image shown below. And this final perspective is again, looking uphillway, this time looking north towards the town center. You can see the ghosted in trees here again. As Rob and John talked about, there's a number of existing trees that are going to be here, as well as a number of trees that we're going to be adding between the sidewalk and the road. You can also see here the entry sign into the medical space, as well as some plantings and fencing in the background, which are screening the parking. Also evident here, we talked about the traditional details. So I hope you can see from this presentation, we've worked hard to design a building which is respectful of the town center district guidelines, and it will fit into both the site and the surrounding neighborhood.
I think as Jocelyn mentioned, other than perhaps in the winter with all the foliage gone, this foreground is the area where we're preserving the trees. This sort of represents the street trees that are planted in Hillway. It's unlikely that you'll see this full presentation of the building in real life. Again, the obscurity of the trees is intentional. Again, a little light, a peek at each building as you go uphillway. Now, in addition to this, this is really the end of our presentation. We also have a full copy of the engineering drawings that were submitted to you for the completeness. So we have those at our disposal if you have any questions about completeness. Otherwise, we're here now to answer any questions you may have, or to seek your guidance on the next steps.
Thank you. Unless any of the board members have questions before we do the public comment, we'll proceed directly to the public comment. Thank you for the presentation. Members of the public, thank you very much for your patience. Let me repeat, this is a, if you'll come up, you'll have three minutes, and please, the topic is completeness of the information presented. We will look for your comments on the merits of the application at our next public hearing. Yes, sir?
Hello. Hi, my name is Chris Straw. I'm at 597 Shore Road. I actually live on a corner lot, and that's going to be relevant for my comments, which are just going to be directed to completeness. The, I could actually not tell from the presentation, the information may be there, may not, but as you likely know from the ordinance, for a corner lot, or a lot having frontage on more than one street, you're required to meet the minimum front setback on each street. And I couldn't see if there was any depiction. I believe your application's requiring a depiction of the setback, and I couldn't see a depiction of the setback from Route 77 to the parking lots, which I believe would be required for completeness on an application. It may have been there, I just couldn't see it because it was so small. It may be on the engineering documents you have, but that would be there. And making sure that that detail is in an application is very important to me, because depending on how you count, I have but five corner lots, as crazy as that sounds, but it is possible with my lot. So I would hope that in reviewing anything that is on a corner lot, be sure to make sure that the front, the frontage setback is depicted properly, and it's considered as a front yard setback for any of the measurements. So if it's there, that's great. If it's not, I think it should be on the application. That's it.
Hi, my name is John Volts. I live at 33 Philip Road. I'm not aware of your specific requirements of completeness, but having watched the presentation and reviewed the documents that are in the town planning office, I was, it was curious to me that there was no indication of the total square footage that's being developed. I didn't see the total anywhere. Also, I was interested to know that there seems to be, other than an aerial view, there is no elevation that shows what it will actually look like when it's done with the trees that will or will not be there. It's very difficult to evaluate, and it doesn't seem complete if you actually don't have a depiction of what it actually will look like. That's my comments regarding completeness. My other comment is directed at the completeness of process, which is, as a result of the late hour, I saw several residents who I think may have wished to be here and potentially speak on this leave. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public like to be heard? Okay, being done, we will close the public part of the meeting on this matter, and go next to the discussion by the board on the presentation. Any questions the board has? Thoughts and whatnot?
I'm just curious. I know our town engineer looked at this, and he said, "In our opinion, this represents a complete package." But there were a number of comments made by the town engineer, so I'm not sure, do we ask the applicant about these questions? Are they going to be following the engineer's comments, or is that for later? I'm not sure where that falls.
You know, that's one of the things I really love about engineers, because they like to get right into the details. And so I think our town engineer feels that he's doing justice to an application when he identifies every possible thing. You'll see a lot of those items, or like the invert elevation should be this instead of this. My conversation with the applicant, and then kind of looking at the applicant, hoping they'll get up and make a comment, is that they have read all of those items and fully intend to address them in the next plan submission.
That is correct. I have, we have read through the letter. A lot of the details are really good details that we'll incorporate. And I've talked to Steve Harding as well. And, yep, we're all on board for those good comments.
Elaine went first. I do have some comments.
I have a question about the parking information, parking information that you've provided.
Yes.
On Lot Two, there is a separate residence, and I don't see any parking on Lot Two, other than what's now going to be shared parking. Is that right?
There is existing parking on there, now in the front, or on the Scott Dyer side.
So in addition to the new parking, there's other parking on Lot Two?
There is. There's existing parking on there. And, yep, and we're providing...
Where is that?
That's on the north side.
And is that parking sufficient to provide all of the parking requirements of the residences on, residences on Lot Two?
On Lot Two. That, and they also have, part of the plan is to provide access to the parking back here as well, through an easement, easement agreements. So the, you know, the occupants of Lot Two would have access on the driveway here and also access to this parking.
So I guess the reason I'm asking the question is, in your parking figures and your calculation of required spaces, you include only the development on Lot One.
Correct.
And if this is actually going to be shared parking, I think we need some information about the parking that would be required for Lot Two, because actually what you're asking us to say is that the shared parking is adequate to serve both the existing use on Lot Two and the new use on Lot One. But we don't have any information in terms of what would be the required parking for the existing use on Lot Two.
Correct. Yep, that's something we can provide next time around. But the idea is that, let me see, let me go to this, this is a little better. But the idea is that, according to the calculations and ordinance, like Rob mentioned, there are 50, 50 spaces are required, and we're providing 51, or one extra anyway. And the idea is that, would like to make the case, anyway, that, that, you know, during the day, parking will be used by the medical clinic. During the evening, there'll be a trade-off where more space will be available for the residential units onsite on Lot One, as well as on Lot Two. But we can expand that and get those counts.
So the 51 spaces include the lot, the, these, yeah, those?
Yeah, not this here, not the existing, but the 51 is all in here, and 50 is required. But I think, you know, with that, with the types of uses there, you know, during the evening, there'll be more spaces available here for residential use. So we'd like to make that case, even though it's not really necessary at this point, it's just...
Well, I agree with Elaine is saying, what Joe picked up, is the requirement for Lot One is 50, and you have 51.
Right.
But what is the requirement for Lot Two?
Correct, and I'll get that information.
Right.
And there is the onsite parking here, plus, well, one extra at this point, but...
Right. So the town engineer mentioned that you should show your parking calculations on one of the sheets, so you can...
I did see that, and actually, it is on that, in CP 101.
Was it? Okay.
Site layout sheet, there's a calculation area. Site layout sheet, there's a calculation area on there.
All right, then we can add Lot 2.
Okay.
I have another question.
Sure.
I noticed that you've asked for a waiver in terms of a sidewalk requirement on Scott Dyer Road, because you're not proposing anything on Lot 3. But it does look to me, from at least one of your drawings, that there is going to be at least some pedestrian access passageway from Lot 1 across Lot 2, and perhaps all the way to Lot 3. Is that correct? Because I've shown, there seems to be a pathway there, going all the way...
There is.
No, up higher.
Up higher? Here? Here. This is...
No, but is there going to be pedestrian passage from Lot 1 all the way across to Lot 3 on Scott Dyer Road?
Not, this is really designed to just provide access for Lot 2, to access Lot 1 here.
Which is the existing...
But not across necessarily to Scott Dyer. So it's just a, it's a stone-dust path for that shared parking, for Lot 2 and Lot 3, oh, Lot 1 and Lot 2, sorry. The sidewalk along Scott Dyer here, the applicant is proposing to provide this sidewalk here on Hillway. And then there's, you know, on the opposite side of Scott Dyer, there's a new sidewalk that has been recently constructed, it's my understanding. And then there's the sidewalk across on Hillway as well.
So are you proposing a permanent waiver of a sidewalk on Scott Dyer Road, or that that would be something that wouldn't be required unless and until Lot 3 is developed?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually not a waiver, it's something that has to happen, but not until later, which is slightly different than a waiver.
If you develop Lot 3...
If I could help with that.
Okay.
The only thing you're reviewing for Lot 3 is subdivision.
Right.
And under the subdivision ordinance, it actually says that you can get a waiver to put sidewalk on only one side of the street. And that's where that's coming from.
But on which street?
Well, the Lot 3 has frontage on Hillway and on Scott Dyer Road. And so the waiver would apply to the portion of the frontage on Scott Dyer Road, because there is an existing sidewalk on the other side of Scott Dyer Road.
Right here.
It would be my expectation that if at any time someone came in for site plan review of Lot 3, that they would then have to construct a sidewalk in order to comply with the Town Center design requirements.
Under site plan review?
Under site plan review.
Okay.
Because Lot 3 isn't getting site plan review right now.
But we don't have to give, we could, if we felt strongly about a sidewalk on both sides...
You could.
As part of the subdivision approval...
Yes.
Say that a sidewalk would not be required on Scott Dyer Road until such time as Lot 3 is developed.
Right. And that would be a substantive discussion-type item.
Okay. Right, not tonight. Once we hear more discussion of those issues.
And again, I think there was a request earlier, the layout plan that John mentioned, CP 101, which this is derived from in your set, does show all the front yard setbacks on Hillway. If you recall, I think it was workshop meeting 1 or 2. The town parcel that basically takes up the corner, that actually is the parcel that has a corner situation. This one actually is a rear situation. This is a front. As we determined, we actually asked for guidance at the second workshop on how we were to evaluate that. So, again, setbacks for side, rear, front, all the setbacks, we believe, are shown on these documents.
And there was a comment about the setback of the parking from Ocean House Road. There was a progress print that the code enforcement officer looked at, and there were revisions made in order to comply with that front yard setback, which the applicants have since done. So this plan is supposed to reflect compliance with that front yard setback.
That's correct. We interpreted, along Ocean House Road, the setback was, how we interpreted it, was a little different than what the town engineer interpreted it, so we made that modification. So, and all the square footages are also shown on CP 101, the site layout plan in the table.
I think in our original sketch plan, we had parking a little further this way. What was the other one, John? Is that it?
Yeah, it's just right up in here.
Up in here. Basically, how that sideline came down.
Sometimes a lot of these setbacks are based on rectangles, and this one is what's assigned to our front yard.
How does that all come together? So that's where our interpretations are a little different. But we made the changes, and it all works fine.
Maureen, could you explain, you've explained the ones already, if the others aren't familiar, the idea that the sidewalk idea for, excuse me, along Hillway will be in a placeholder status because of the work being done on the other side of the street by the time?
Right, and it's very, I'm recommending that the board look at the information that the applicant has submitted for completeness, but not be surprised if it looks a lot different in a month. Because the town council has identified Hillway as an area where they want to do improvements. The public works director has cautioned me that, you know, they're just starting the design process. I have taken the position that this applicant needs to show sidewalk plantings, stormwater as part of their site plan application, but we're still working to coordinate all that. And the applicant has been great about wanting to coordinate with the town's work, and the town needs a little more time to kind of figure out what direction they're moving in. And I'm hoping that in the next month or two, we can at least come together on a coordinated concept. And then the applicants would have to figure out what, how much of that is happening on their property, how much of that's going into the town's project. So this is still a little bit of a moving target.
So would that, that's not going to fundamentally change anything about your buildings or your overall site circulation? It would just be details in the front?
Just the details on Hillway, how that works, exactly.
Exactly.
But it will look different from what we have here.
It could. I think those elements will be there still, but the configuration could be a little different.
Is, Victoria?
I was looking through the plans, and I was looking at your site utility plan, and I agree with the town engineer on point number 21. He said that the utility schedule should be added to sheet CU 101. But in addition to the town engineer's request, because he asked you to include A1 and A2 lighting call-outs, I also saw things that were A and B. A and B also, lighting fixtures or...
The lighting fixtures.
Or utilities. I wasn't sure what A and B is, and if you're going to call out A1 and A2...
Right. It should be all, it should be all on the schedule, and if it's not, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Okay, because the town engineer only asked you to call out A1 and A2. So I'm asking if you could also identify what A and what B are.
Okay.
Also, on that same sheet, the location of the building lights are not indicated, but the letter B appears twice on the building, and the number 1 in bold 15 times, and the number, oh, actually, it says first in shadow is six times. I'm not sure what those are. Are those light fixtures on the building, and could those be called out and identified?
We will take a look at that, make sure it's all covered.
Okay. And, let's see. Maureen, question for you. Is the triangle subdivision plan, SD 101, is this going to be sent over to, like, the registry of deeds? Does it need a signing block?
Yep.
Needs a signing block?
Eventually, we need to have a plaque that has a signing block.
Okay, I would ask that a signing block please be added to whatever's going to be sent over. I'm assuming it's SD 101?
Yeah, we technically allow that.
Probably the one that's going to be sent over to the registry of deeds. Then also, and this is from minor subdivision submission requirements from Chapter 16, subdivision plans should include the zoning district designation. So you'd want to just say, "This is the Town Center." It also needs setback provisions, and that's number, both of these are items number 11 on our Chapter 16 sub submission requirements.
Yep.
You also need your space standards, so you want to also, this is number 11, right up here under your notes, you want to say, like, the total area of Lot 1 is, Lot 2, Lot 3, and so on. You want to have that in acres and also square footage.
I believe that's all on the subdivision plan now. Is that in the notes? Does that...
Oh, let's see. Yep, I think I do see that.
And the zoning?
I think you are right. It's note number four. Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, thank you. Let's see. The calculation of open space to be used to meet the open space impact fee, so that would be item number 20 on our submission package.
Right. And in the narrative, we review the open space requirements and talk about how that will be met with the fee.
That's, yeah, it's item number 20 on our Chapter 16, and it says you do need to...
The calculations?
Calculations, the open space to be used to meet the open space impact fee.
Okay.
Now you're doing the fee. Also, on phasing, item number 22, also Chapter 16, talks about phasing. And in your documents that you submitted, you say, "Phase 1 will consist of developing Lot 1 and a portion of Lot 2," in accordance with documents submitted. I'd like to see the phasing plan beefed up a little bit. I'm not sure what portion of 2 will be in Phase 1.
I think that's just referred to that parking lot, the shared parking lot and pathway.
Right, what we meant was, it's really, it's all of the development in Lot 2, which is really, a portion of Lot 2, was really meant to include any of the improvements that are a portion of Lot 2. Probably that should just be stated Lot 1 in, any improvement to Lot 2.
Anything that's, yeah, anything that's there. And I just saw, you also have utilities, water, sewer, storm, and electrical, and I only saw sewer going to Lot 2. They're all set with water, and they're all set with all the others. Okay.
Correct, yeah, everything else is on...
But I would like to see something beefed up on that whole phasing, so we know exactly what is. So it's on the plans.
Sure.
I know it's in the material, but I've heard many times from our code enforcement officer, put it into the plans. He's not going to be reading through this entire document to piece that all together.
Right, so we could put that right in the notes. Okay.
And note number 5 on SD 101, you have that the lot number is 47. It's actually Lot number 74.
Okay.
Note number...
Note number 5, okay.
And that would be it under completeness. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Other board members with comments or questions? Just a quick question, the, and this is my own ignorance speaking, the asphalt that is actually permeable?
Yeah.
Is this a new, is this some new product, or has this been around for a while?
It is a relatively new product, probably in the last, I don't know, five or six, seven years. University of New Hampshire Stormwater Center's done a lot of research on it, and we've had several installations up in the Bangor area. Eastern Main Community College has a parking lot. We've done several public housing projects with porous pavement. City of Bangor did a section of porous pavement, and a local, and as well as that, the main mall road, the DOT put a section in front of the mall area. It's all porous pavement as well.
So if you have an inch of rain, you can calculate how much is going to penetrate through the asphalt and how much is going to runoff?
Right, yeah, yeah, you can model it. We model it with some stormwater modeling software.
How does it stand up to freezing when it's wet? I mean, the sun beats on it, water...
On the surface?
Well, the water would start to go down into it, freeze at night, water would expand.
Yeah. No, it's just the structure.
Sorry. Sure, I'm getting it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to point out that the planning board has actually approved permeable paving for a private access way on Shore Road.
Really?
It's not the first time we've seen it.
I just want to point out, we haven't acted on completeness yet.
No, I'm just asking you back, right?
No, we've not voted completely. That was just a question on the information presented.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions going to the issue of completeness? Being done, can I ask for a motion on completeness? Joe?
Motions for the board to consider. Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that, based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Two Penguin Properties LLC for minor subdivision review of a three-lot subdivision and site plan review of two buildings containing 6,205 square feet of medical office space, 10 multifamily residential units, and a 357-square-foot building connector located at 12 Hillway be deemed complete.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? A call for a vote? All in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
We have one word that we want to do.
Oh, we got one to do.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Ah, sidewalk. I'm sorry, thank you, Maureen.
Sorry.
We have the, it has been rescheduled. How about a sidewalk? I think this would be highly useful.
Yes.
It's, in the past, a early Saturday morning has helped, has been something people, some people like, some don't.
Again, Saturday morning.
Is there anybody who needs early Saturday morning?
Which Saturday morning?
Which Saturday?
Well, that's the next question, but...
I will just state that I am out of town from the 20th through the 29th.
So can you do the 19th? Can you do the 19th?
That's, it's Saturday. Yeah, I could.
And I will be out, and...
I could do this Saturday.
Do you want to do it April 2nd?
Yep.
I may not be back. I won't be here.
Okay.
Didn't we do it Friday?
We have, we've been done to. Did we decide that Saturday, the 19th, would not work?
Saturday, the 19th, works for planning member Jordan. Planning member Steinberg is apparently going to be out of town for some time.
Yeah, I'm going to Mexico again.
Apparently, he's going to be out of town the next three weeks.
No, no, no.
Okay.
If you want, you want to make it this 19th, the 19th?
That's, it's coming.
That's this Saturday.
I can do this Saturday.
I'm gone, but that's fine.
Okay.
Caroline, you okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we can leave by 9:00.
Yeah, I've got to be gone early also. So 7:30, does that work for people?
This, uh...
Okay.
You won't need snowshoes.
Might need boots, though.
You might need boots.
Right. Okay, that's Saturday, March 19th, 7:30 a.m. on Hillway there at the site. Is that a good spot for you guys to start, right just where the front of the buildings lay?
Parking, driving, parking, closer to Scott Dyer, so it doesn't weigh too much. There's a, there's a parking lot across the street at the school, which won't be used that morning.
At the school.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. There is a final opportunity for the public to be heard on anything else that wasn't on the agenda?
No, you got a motion. Motion to table.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you didn't read both of them, John.
Do you like a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Motion to table. Be it ordered that the above application be tabled to the regular April 25, 2016 meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously? I'm sorry, I thought George... Okay. Are we good? Thanks to the applicant and to the members of the public who came tonight.
Motion, we adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Done. Done.